Recording in progress.
Well, welcome to Committee of the Whole for the Cathet Regional District. And I'm Sandy McCormick. As Chair of the Committee, I will acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of Lommenation. Directors, you have an agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda, Director Gifford?
Yes, I would like to move the agenda, but with item eight point two occurring directly after the delegation section.
Okay, item eight point two, is everybody up here with us now?
Second.
Okay.
It is part of the motion.
It's part of the motion. Okay, so you're seconding the people with the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Opposed? Chair. Adoption of the minutes, are they separate? Are there errors or issues? Seeing no hands, a motion to adoption. Discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Very. Delegations. We have two delegations, and I don't know if you want to together or how you wish to do it, but I would welcome you, Ariel and Gareth. Is are listed as our first. Francis, I don't know if you want to get four Ariel's.
Yes. So, thank you, Chair. We first are going to have Gareth Mog and Ariel Guetta.
Okay.
And they are joining us virtually. Then we can ask them to turn on their phone.
So if you haven't turned on your camera, please do so. Thank you. And so this is your time to give us your presentations. So thank you very much, Ariel and Gareth.
Oh, and great. Thank you, Chair Karen Moss, as we
Here, sorry. Yeah, that's right. Welcome. Go ahead, please. You have ten minutes.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to acknowledge that my colleague Ariel is just stepping out of another meeting and will be joining us very shortly. Karen Moss is here on the call as well, but I will just try to get my screen shared now so I can start the presentation. I am having some technical difficulties, however. Sorry, please be with me. I'm just trying to show the show the screen. Can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
We can.
Excellent. So yes, as mentioned, my name is Gareth Mog. I'm a Senior Planning Analyst from the Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs. My colleague Ariel Guetta will be joining us shortly. She is the Director of Governance Services. And also my colleague Karen Moss on the call as well from Infrastructure and Finance. So the delegation that we are here to talk about today is to give a bit of a broad overview of the conversion process and what it takes when it what it involves converting an improvement district to a regional district or a municipal service. I will try to keep this sort of a bit more broad and generic, but I will try where I can to reference how this does apply to Lund Waterworks District and Cathet. So I'll just move my slide over a second. So what is an improvement district conversion? Essentially, it is the transfer of all assets, liabilities, everything that is owned by an improvement district to a regional district service. Every conversion is unique, pretty shaped by local context and service needs. And in the that regional district, this is particularly unique in the case that it Waterworks District overlaps with treaty First Nation land from Tlaman First Nation, which means that aside from just considering the the needs of the service area and the ratepayers, we also need to provide consideration to how this may impact treaty rights and title. That said, there are also a very a variety of other principles that go into governing how we undertake conversions. So first provincial policy as a principle is encouraging the gradual conversion of improvement districts or government services. But there is no such thing as a forced conversion. It's important to clarify that. It only happens when both a local government and the improvement districts, the community are all on board with converting. So major service changes generally don't happen during conversions. Everything remains fairly static. There's been no major changes going on with Lund at this stage, just due to the nature of avoiding complexities during the transfer of the service. Everyone shares in the process. Regarding conversion, it's important to ensure that the community are well informed and have all the information on hand to help them make a decision on whether or not they do wish to convert. So what is an improvement district conversion? So in terms of bringing forward the request, improvement districts can see conversion for a variety of different reasons. One of the some of the most common ones we tend to hear are rising infrastructure costs with with limited reserves exists. So boards may have issues raising taxes, for instance, to cover infrastructure upgrades. Sometimes there's long-serving trustees stepping down without replacement stepping in. The district sometimes outgrows its capacity. And there's a higher demand for infrastructure. And sometimes there's just generally an overall desire for stronger governance. Where improvement districts are fairly lacking in the robust tools and access to financial support and grants that local governments are able to access. There's also sometimes growing community conflicts that arise as well around treatment options, taxation, and they sometimes feel the improvement district is not the most appropriate avenue to continue that. With regards to Lund, my understanding is infrastructure is old and in need of replacement. And also the Lund Board of Trustees disbanded several years ago and has been operated by a receiver, which is a provincially appointed representative to oversee the management of the improvement district. So how does improvement district conversions typically come about? They are charity consent based processes with the improvement district Board of Trustees on behalf of local landowners. And then the local government working together for a transition. And in this situation, as I've already mentioned, it's the receiver that will be working that is working with Cathet and the community. It's important that landowners have opportunities to discuss this transition, ask questions, raise concerns. It's the ministry policy when assessing a conversion request that there is a demonstrated support of shown by the community. This is often confirmed at various stages throughout the process, either through annual general meetings or open houses, sometimes online surveys, community polls. But it is definitely one of those questions that arises during the passing of an order and council upon conversion to confirm that the community are supportive of the of converting to the service and they understand the implications of doing so. But also ensuring that they understand the implications of not. So sometimes knowing that voting no to a conversion may result in higher costs if the situation is not some of the financial issues or infrastructure issues not resolved. So preparing for the improvement district conversions, there's a lot of phases as it relates to these conversions. I'm going to go through each one of these over the next couple of slides. So firstly, the preparation and the community engagement is important to note they often do overlap or they occur simultaneously. So if the improvement district and the regional board is interested in the regional district taking on the responsibility of the service staff, and the improvement district should begin discussing what this transfer could look like to ensure there are no delays in service provisions upon conversion. For example, agreeing on the timing of the transfer, financial information, status of the infrastructure, the information that may be integrated within the regional district system, such as service areas or infrastructure maps and billing information, as well as any relevant documentation to the operation and administration of the service, such as bylaws, water licenses, drinking water protection plans, et cetera. For some conversions, these details are worked out within legal transition agreements and in another manner that is in alignment with local government acquisition policies. Or they're sometimes more informally captured in community outreach documents. Preparing for community engagement is also an equally important part of the process. It starts with identifying who the improvement district's clients are with Lund, as I've already mentioned, that isn't just residential and commercial. It also includes treaty First Nation, which Tlaman Nation owning six properties within the Lund boundaries that are on treaty land. It's also important to confirm that community is fully understanding of the that the infrastructure that they have, the needs that the improvement district has as well moving forward. But it's also important to understand the general scale of the what is included within the infrastructure, such as demographics, the household types, the average incomes, et cetera, to help assess financial burdens. Assessing administrative and operational needs also helps determine if another party should join in with the discussions, especially when we are considering treaty lands. Common themes that are often brought up during community engagement sessions on conversion would be political representation, organizational impact, service impact, and any financial considerations. The community will ultimately participate in a vote of some sort to show whether there is broad support. Can either be done informally by the improvement district or through a formal electoral approval process through the Local Government Act, which is often something done by the regional district while establishing a new service or loan bylaw. The latter example there with the regional district conducting the vote, it provides pretty clear assurances that the community does therefore agree to accept the terms of a new service. And the any loan amounts that are then associated with it. And it is a more rounded way of clarifying that support. So community outreach often comes from a variety of different methods. I've already mentioned a couple of them, but just to quickly go over them again here. Improvement districts typically work with local governments on the messaging related to conversion and often include in-person meetings, open houses, special meetings, annual general meetings. Sometimes sharing information on local news outlets or community newsletters, direct outreach through mailouts, virtual methods such as newsletters, social media posts. And sometimes the improvement district and the local government concurrently post information as the conversion process is underway. It's important with Lund specifically to ensure that engagement with First Nations occurs and to do so early. Answering questions, addressing any disconcerns and identifying the additional steps needed for a government service can often go a long way to ensure that the messaging is succinct and is the same between all parties, but also ensuring that any issues that do arise through those conversations can be addressed earlier to avoid any future disruptions in the conversion process. I know that conversations have been fairly ongoing with Tlaman Nation regarding the Cathet and Lund conversion process. The it's important to clarify as well that there is a duty to consult that the province has related to this conversion due to the nature of Tlaman having treaty land within the service area boundary. And that is not a replacement for the engagement efforts that would be undertaken by Cathet Regional District and Lund. So once the regional district and the improvement district agree that they're ready to proceed, they submit relevant materials to the ministry for review. This includes outcomes of ratepayer engagement, conversion plans and outlines timings that both parties have agreed to, such as when the conversion or the order and council that actions, the conversion comes into effect. Resolutions from both of the Board of Directors and then also the Board of Trustees, or in this case, it would be from the receiver. So at this stage, the ministry is typically looking for a few things when assessing a conversion. We want to understand the reasoning behind the request, what's driving the conversion. We also want to look at who's involved and whether there's general agreement between the parties. That community support has been established and demonstrated clearly. Whether or not there is a solid plan to make sure services continue smoothly after the conversion. And finally, are there any time sensitive factors or deadlines that we need to be made aware of? So there are a few key legislative steps involved in an improvement district conversion. We initiate the First Nations consultation to get feedback and identify their concerns. Timing as well, an important piece, as I've already mentioned. Setting a future effective date can sometimes have implications on local government finance year or fiscal years, such as conversion coming in on January first or after January first. I know I'm getting close to my time, so I'm just trying to wrap up by here. Traditional provisions in order and council typically allow improvement district bylaws and resolutions to remain in effect after conversion. And then the regional district will convert them over after the fact. And then once everything is in place, the OIC transfers everything over to the regional district. And just very quickly here, post conversion, there's generally a number of engagement steps alerting everyone to the conversion having taken place, ensuring all the data sets are updated. And there is ongoing ministry support that is provided to the regional district after the fact. I will cut it a bit short there. I will save any time for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm sure directors do have questions. Start with Director Elliot. Thank you, Chair.
So this is all talking about how we get to yes. What if we never get to yes? What if along the way we we discover we don't have the support we need? And you never get to yes. What happens then?
And this is an event is a possibility that that happens. It's the decision to convert, as I mentioned, it's shared by all parties. The first would be ensuring that the regional district and the improvement district are willing to work together. And then the second is ensuring that the community is equipped with all the tools they need to make a decision. And ultimately, it is the community that does decide. They would form the future service area of a regional district water system, water service. And any amounts of money to upgrade the system that are not covered by a grant, in this case, I know that there is a grant, the ISIP grant that is available for the Lund Waterworks District. And there is a residual amount owing if the community determine that that amount exceeds what they feel comfortable paying and they decide to vote no. Part of the way the ministry supports the regional and the improvement district moving forward there would be ensuring that they understand in advance of that first that there are implications to voting no, such as potentially increased costs and lack of access to the grant because the grant does require conversion to occur. And if despite the understanding that a not converting could have also large financial consequences as it comes to upgrading the system, holding that burden. Then the ministry will continue then to support Lund Waterworks District in its operation to see if there are any other tools that we can help equip them with to meet their service needs. And sometimes if the the improvement district will continue to not be able to self self manage itself or a receiver was not able to be sourced in the future, or the Board of Trustees did not decide to reconvene. And there are other governance scenarios that can be explored. And sometimes that may result in a dissolution, which would be the closure of the improvement district and then the shutting down of that service. But dissolution is often something that we try to avoid if there is a clear defined need for the service in the area, which at this stage it appears that is.
Yeah, true.
So cost implications for dissolution, how does that get recovered from you? Have you had that happen anywhere before?
Can I just confirm you meant dissolution as in the dissolving of the improvement district and not the converting of it?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the alternative. Because because the amount of money is so high, I know that out in the community, there's resistance to that price tag. So I want to better understand what happens in in the event that we don't move forward with with conversion. What what do community people, what can they expect?
I'm just going to see if my colleague Ariel is on the call. Ariel, are you there?
Yep.
Is that something you would be able to speak to in addition to what I've already mentioned?
Yeah, a little bit. So I don't know how many instances we've had where a system is not in good shape and the community still wants to receive the service and it has not moved forward to conversion. So I don't have a lot to pull from here. As Gareth said, if they wanted to continue to operate the water system, they would be required to meet health standards for the treatment of the water. So they would need to figure out how they are going to pay for that. Improvement districts do have access to private lending. So they can get a loan from a private bank. But they would not have access to lending through the MFA, which has generally better rates. There's also the dams and there is our understanding is there's a couple of requirements on those dams right now. So the community would have to figure out how it could potentially fund the improvements to those dams as well. So if they wanted to continue to operate, they would still be looking at costs to deal with the dams, get treatment in place. And then if the infrastructure that's aging, I'm going to assume that would need to be replaced at some point so that things are not leaking. If they decided that they did not want to continue with the water service, then the system gets wound down. And everyone would have to figure out where they're going to receive their water from independently. As I said, this is that would be a very unique scenario and it's hard for me to say with certainty what that path would look like or what those costs would look like. But this is a hypothetical of what could happen.
Yep, dissolution tends to only really occur in situations where there is a clear need for the service to not be in place anymore because alternatives have been found and sourced. In this circumstance, the ratepayers are only able to access water through the Lund Waterworks District at the moment. And I don't think there is any interest in exploring alternative sourcing of water at this stage. So there is still desire within the community for the service to continue, but for it to be brought up to to standards, which is where the application for the grant came in and the work that has been ongoing between Cathet and Lund over the last few years.
Thank you. I have Director Gifford next and Selkot.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. My question is because I like to learn what's happened in other jurisdictions. As I understand, our regional district, we have the Tlaman Treaty First Nation and the Tlaman Treaty First Nation is not part of our regional district. They're not part of our territory jurisdictional wise. I hear that that's kind of an anomaly across the province. Now, the improvement district that we're talking about converting, part of the land in that improvement district is treaty First Nation settlement land. And also on our agenda, there's a proposal for a parcel of being also added to treaty settlement land. And that includes, I believe, the dam and the treatment facility and things like that. So I'm wondering, is there any examples around the province where an improvement district conversion has occurred where it's a handed to the regional district, but the assets aren't actually in the regional district? Like if the dam gets handed to us, but it's it's converted to treaty settlement land, then it's not our jurisdiction. It's not our land. So we have no authority over that. So I'm just wondering what other examples are there across the province where a regional district or a municipality has taken on assets that aren't actually within their jurisdiction? Are there any examples?
You can take that question if you want, Gareth. So Lund is unique because as far as we know, they're the only improvement district that has treaty land within their boundaries. We are aware of other improvement districts that have reserved land in their boundaries and they provide water to the reserve. But this is a unique situation. That being said, there are lots of examples, and you guys already do this, of regional districts providing a service to a treaty through agreement. I believe there are situations, this is not related to treaty land, where an asset of a regional district may be located outside of their boundaries. So for example, in another regional district. And I can find examples of that for you. As you're probably aware, regional districts are able to have a service outside their boundaries in certain situations. So I can find an example of that if that would be helpful, but it's not an example of a an asset being on treaty land.
So we're we're paving a new path.
No, teams, thanks, Chair.
I would add, if that's okay, Chair, just on top of Ariel's point as well, with regards to conversion and the inclusion of Tlaman treaty lands. As the Lommenation have treaty property, are treaty lands located within the boundaries of the Lund Waterworks District upon conversion, those lands would not automatically become a beneficiary of the service. The Lund, the that regional district would have to establish a a separate service agreement with Tlaman Nation. And those discussions are ones that would be occurring prior to conversion happening to ensure that there is a seamless transition. And during those conversations, the discussion around location of assets, I'm sure is something that could be brought up during those discussions as well to determine whether or not there are any easements or if there is any rights of ways that can be established, if not already in place.
Thank you. You're up, do next.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And I appreciate you taking the time to take our questions. Area is obviously my area and I'm a user, so I'm intimate with this subject and appreciate the folks in the in our audience that have come, taken the time to be here as well to listen and our receiver. And I also want to thank you as staff for the ministry. This is a tough file. Ariel, I think you've been working on this over a decade, so I remind people of that. So thank you. It's these are the tough jobs that we're all trying to do. I think just a couple of points and a couple of questions. I appreciate that you identified for people, there is no mechanism for forced conversion because people worry about, you know, just being forced into a solution that that the majority may not agree with. You mentioned reconstituting the improvement district and sort, you know, appreciate the other, the question that's the open question, what if people say no? So thanks for identifying what the the kind of connotations of that are. Is there any work started with Minister Anderson or our MLA from Walrus, Minister Neil around this subject? And the reason I ask is because obviously with Minister Anderson's new portfolio to bring all the different ministries that have skin in the game together, this is the perfect an opportunity we have for her new ministry. And also Minister Neil has been very proactive about meeting in the community, had an improvement water district meeting recently with so and Lund is just the first, by the way. So I know you know this, but I guess so. My question is, is there any engagement with Minister Anderson's new ministry? You'll be seeing a letter from the board as well supporting that.
Ariel, can I defer to you there? I'm not too familiar with what Minister Anderson is up to these days.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't, I'm probably not the best person to ask that because I think those conversations, if they were happening, would be with our infrastructure folks. But I am aware that some of the improvement districts in the region did meet with Minister Neil recently. But I'm not sure what the outcome of those meetings has been. So I can definitely get back to you on that.
Thanks. I just recommend that we all talk to each other instead of in isolation. And my final one, you bring up Tlaman, and I appreciate the points raised. There's a lot of unknown in the community right now. And I appreciate that we're talking about this and not trying to go in camera every time we talk about First Nations issues. We are unique. And so I will say consultation is one way right now. This board has no information on any of this stuff. And so it's hard, you know, we you'll see on our agenda later on, we have 12 items to discuss about this this system. Couple of at least two or three of them touching on the First Nation, being in a unique position, being a landholder. And if that property was to be removed, the concerns, you know, it's it's a benefit. We we support the nation in their work. They have a what I understand is a unique treaty that allows them to to open it up and to add lands and that, you know, and not necessarily familiar with the process. But there's not all just positive connotations to that. I think if anybody kind of thinks about it, if we lose landmass in our area, lose taxation, our bylaws don't apply in our watershed in an area that's designated if we lose landmass in our area, lose taxation, our bylaws don't apply in our watershed in an area that's designated as Lund Village Centre. So I just kind of want to throw those out there that that consultation has only been one way at higher levels in this board. And I'm not very happy that municipalities have decision-making power in these, in these items and treaty settlement and regional districts don't. So that's not a question, but I just wanted to put that out there while I had the chance. There's lots more to talk about. I do appreciate your work. And really, this is important information we've seen in other areas, educating the public about all the multifaceted things that are going on here. We have an opportunity to not just force this through. You've heard about some of the sentiment and to not be infamous examples of how to get it wrong and just force the issue, but to get it right. So, thank you.
Thanks, Director Lennox.
Chair. Although I've been an alternate for many years, a lot of the material, you know, to do with this file is somewhat is in detail more newer to me. And but I, I appreciate a decade of work. Since I have been sitting at these tables for about that long, that's a long time. And yet sometimes good things take a long time. So that's really, really what I'm hoping and praying for here. Having been connected to Lund in various ways for a long time. So my question is sort of aimed at a subtlety. I am, I remember enforcement warning letters being received by the city of Powell River to do with wastewater treatment. This is a few years ago now. And I understand that conversion can't be forced. But in your comments, you kind of inferred that there are mechanisms that almost are tantamount to enforcement. Should the population of the improvement district not want to go along with the eventuality of, and I'm assuming we're heading in the direction of conversion. Is there anything more you can say with regard to that or your, your comments were pretty clear, but I, it, it leaves a big question mark in my mind and that is really, I guess it could be called constructive enforcement. Like, do I understand this? I'd, I'd really like to understand that particular element of the situation a little more clearly. Because I really feel in a lot of cases in society in general, we're facing extremely challenging situations that require us all to bite the bullet together and we don't always want to do that. So I think that's where I'm headed with this. If you have any comments with regard to that question, thank you.
I'm not completely sure what's being asked there. But I'm guessing you're asking about the fact that there doesn't, like, there aren't a lot of alternatives for the improvement district? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, I'll just make this a bit, a little bit clearer. Basically, what I heard you say was that you suggested that if it went to a referendum and it was not, what was presented to the electorate was not approved, then essentially the province would require the improvement district to, or the people who are receiving that service to comply with requirements. In other words, provincial regulatory requirements. And my question is, I mean, that essentially amounts to what I see as enforcement. And I know that that would not be, nobody would want to look at it that way, but am I seeing this correctly?
I think what you are potentially referring to and what Ariel's talking about is the, the health authorities requirement for drinking water systems to be up to a certain standard. And in that regard, that, that applies broadly. That isn't something that just applies to improvement districts, it's to any water provider throughout the province, whether or not that is a water system that is owned and operated by a local government or an improvement district. And I think what Ariel was stating was even in the absence of conversion, that requirement does not go away. It's a, it's a health mandate to provide clean drinking water through a system that has adequate filtration. And I don't have all of the, the technical information in front of me because I'm not a water expert, but it is just to, it is that regulatory requirement. And in the event of a, a vote that is contrary to conversion, the community has expressed that they don't want to accept the costs, then the only options moving forward would be business as usual or to shut down the system. And both of those would also carry fairly significant implications. Business as usual, as I've already referenced, would open up the improvement district who needed to source the funds themselves. And it would also result in them not having access to grant funding to cover some of those costs. So the cost burden would be fairly significant in that scenario. A lot of this comes into ensuring that the community, when they do make a decision, have that understanding. It's not just an understanding of what a yes vote means, it also is the implications of a no vote and where that could lead them as well. So I, I, I appreciate the question. I think it's an important thing to ensure the community is made aware of as well is what the options are. If they decide not to proceed. And in that situation, it is those, those two options are the, the clear ones that I can see. And that isn't to state that there aren't other ones, but as we mentioned, there's no forced conversion unless the community, the regional district and the Tlaman Nation, but also the improvement district as well, are all on board. It does not, these, these things don't move forward unless all parties are at the same table together.
Thank you very much. That really clarifies it for me.
Thanks, Director Southcott. Excuse me, anyone who hasn't asked a question yet? Seeing no further hands, go to Director.
Thank you, Chair. So one of the parts that feels a bit fuzzy with a lack of information, for me anyways, is this new situation where the assets of the improvement district now and upon conversion would then, would be located on lands that are being converted to treaty lands but weren't before. And, and so that may be a good thing, bad thing. We don't, we don't know. Problem is, is there's gray area around how, how that would look for access and whether easements would work the same as what we're used to or be something different. And so I'm curious about in the processes for consultation, if that topic has come up and whether there has been any discussions around intention or how that might work.
While you're working on an answer for that question, our manager of planning services has a, has a word to say. So Ms. Rodden?
Good Chair, thank you. Yeah, I have a question. Are there any examples that the province is aware of where a local government and a First Nation have partnered to deliver a water service? Because given the complexities of the jurisdiction in Lund and, and land ownership and the fact that the Tlaman Nation, I think, is the biggest user of the water service. I'm just wondering if there's any examples of that and if conversion could be to a partnership.
I think I missed the, the last part of that, that question then from, from staff.
The conversion would be a partnership model.
As I've already mentioned, one of the things that needs to be occurring at the same time as communications with the community, but also these conversations going on between Lund and Cathed will be conversations that need to occur between Cathed and Tlaman Nation. Just due to the fact that a separate service agreement would need to be established. The details of what that conversation could include fairly broad, I think it is really at the sort of the discretion of the regional district on what topics they would like to bring up with Tlaman Nation regarding any potential service agreements or service arrangements around delivery. And the same would also apply for the discussion around easements and rights of way and ensuring that if there are any issues that those can be discussed during those during those discussions. The service agreement would not only outline the, the terms of the service and the scale of the service that Tlaman Nation would receive from Cathed Regional District. It would also talk about costs and any assets, rights of way, needs, any of those other sort of overlaps that occur. And it would also be at the discretion of Cathed Regional District and Tlaman Nation on whether or not they are interested in pursuing any conversations around service arrangements or collaboratory service delivery. It's really what goes on in those conversations is, is we, we, we're not privy to those ones. We can't really comment on that, but I don't think that there is any reason why those discussions can't include that, that sort of information. Ariel, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything to that point, but.
Yeah, I would just add, I can ask our colleagues in governance relations to see if they have any examples of local governments and First Nations partnering on provision of water. I know there are lots of examples of local governments providing water to First Nations and there might even be examples of First Nations providing water to residents in a regional district. Yeah, but I'm not sure about a, a joint partnership on providing the service together. So I can ask about that.
I think the closest might be in Fort St. James with the Nakosley-Wooten First Nation. I think technically it is, the service is operated by Fort St. James and supplied to Nakosley through a service arrangement. But there is, they've, they've made it even more complicated. There's also a wastewater system which is operated by Nakosley and serves Fort St. James. And so they have sort of a collective partnership through those two utilities. But neither of those has anything to do with an improvement district.
Thank you. Director Elliott, you still have the floor?
Thank you so much. I just had a small follow-up here. So my question was whether, and I appreciate you saying we should have our conversations directly about our needs and I think that's excellent and that opportunity is, is one I hope to take advantage of in the very near future or that we do. My, my question is rooted in the idea that decisions around conversion of lands to treaty lands happen outside of any conversation with the Cathed Regional District. And so issues about existing infrastructure that is on those lands isn't isn't, isn't from, isn't part of the process. So you've explained a very great process about who, who you need to talk to and who we need to to have on board before we can get to conversion. The, the conversion of private lands to treaty settlement lands, which is part of the treaty for Tlaman Nation, which I support and think is a good idea, does not include regional districts or improvement districts as part of the folks that they need to have on board in order to get to the conversion decision there. But the province does have consultation that they do in those discussions. And so my curiosity was whether those assets that are part of the improvement districts that were discussion for conversion have made it into those conversations and how our, our interests might be protected through that process, not, not our conversion process, but their conversion process. And that was my curiosity. And, and maybe this isn't the right place to ask it, but the grayness about the information there makes it difficult for us to put out clear information to get where we're going.
Yeah, so we're, we're not typically that involved in the process about converting land to treaty land. That being said, it did seem like from reading the Tlaman treaty that certain rights of way and easements were continued when they did their treaty. So as Gareth was saying, I think having, starting to have those conversations with Tlaman now about the service agreement and anything related to that, including rights of way is a good step to take because hopefully they could communicate that when they are looking at making that change. We can also reach out to our colleagues at MRR just to let them know that this, this process is in place and that they may need to think about that when they're going through their process. But yeah, I don't, I personally have not had a lot of experience with that. But again, I will reach out to our folks in relations to see there's any avenue for us to flag anything.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands around the table. So I'd like to thank you, all of you for your presentation. You are, I guess, excused now. So thank you again.
Might want to listen.
So our next delegation is no stranger to the regional district. I'd welcome Frances Liddray, who is the receiver for the Lund Water District.
Before we start, I had intended to bring a large map to the area. And I know that the regional district have on your website under the Lund there is a map prepared of the whole area and the groupings. It was prepared for the Court of Revision. Is there any way to bring that up on your screen? This might be useful when we talk about ending lines and.
Chair, if the staff could try while we talk.
Okay, it might take them a few minutes. So that's okay.
Right. So as the receiver, I am representing the interests of the Lund Water Service. Property owners and on-societies who are going to benefit for an upgraded water system to serve the community and all its visitors. I'm hopeful that my comments will help your deliberations on the many questions that are before you. I will try to be brief. I, I'm stuff a lot in that report. So QRD has been asked to over, to take over an aging water system with many problems. Staff and elected officials, I think, are right to be cautious about accepting undue liability and about ensuring its ability to manage the ongoing operation and maintenance responsibilities and their implications for staffing and required expertise as the organization's capacity is already stretched. So I understand. At the same time, Lund residents and visitors are faced with paying already for substandard water plus having to buy their drinking water because it's not possible. And then improvement district, particularly the operator lives, who by the way is the audience here, Courtney, in fear of some major breakdown in infrastructure while an $11 million grant has been approved and sits waiting to be spent. So there's some frustration around all of that. I support the position taken by Al Radke and I assume it's the position of the board, but the provincial government, which had some oversight responsibility for improvement districts, allowed these systems to deteriorate to an unsustainable condition. And therefore, the province should provide sufficient funding to bring them to a reasonable standard before having regional districts take them on with their attendant liabilities and operational problems. And I do commend Al's diligence in pursuing additional funding so Lund could have a high-quality system. However, these efforts have not yielded the intended results and I'm not optimistic optimistic this will change, given the expected worsening economic conditions in B C and Canada. The staff report has several good suggestions that would result in a quality water system. If funds were unlimited, I expect Lund ratepayers would readily agree to all of them. Funds are not unlimited. What seems to have been lost is the needs versus wants of informal community advisory committee and the community at large to come up with a system that would produce clean water and reliable infrastructure to standards appropriate for this small community and affordable to the limited number of taxpayers and users who will foot the bill. Lund isn't, they're not asking for a substandard system. They already have that. They're just asking for modified system. Doesn't necessarily have to meet all. It doesn't necessarily have to meet all provincial design standards. One that works will produce quality water. Will take care of any risks and liabilities that the regional district would be in uh subject to, but the improvement district is now like the dams. The staff report has several good suggestions that would result, sorry, I think I said. Several of the items in the report are noted as having cost implication. These costs are not identified, making it difficult for directors to understand the implications of the recommendations with respect to affordability. And I I have to tell you, affordability is the primary consideration of the Lund water users. The previous uh report in twenty twenty-two, I think it was, twenty twenty-three, it was going to be an um what a parcel tax of about fifteen hundred dollars per parcel. And it was on that basis that the then receiver said, and the community, this is too much money, we have to look at ways to bring it down. And so that exercise has been ongoing to the point where now the same system would be twenty-four hundred dollars. Well, there's got to be some modification somewhere along the line, I think, or the people are not going to go for it. That's my sense. Based on input from individuals and the advisory committee members' discussions in the community with other locals and many many Lundites are aware that the upgraded system will be expensive. They may be willing to support those costs, provided they are not being asked to pay for a system that goes beyond what is required for present local needs. Respect to some of the items on your agenda, it's unfortunate the engineer who has been working on this project for the past two years was not consulted. My recent discussions with him have given me additional information or clarification of some items which may have assisted directors in their decision-making. I don't intend to address all these items individually, but there are some that I think warrant attention. Item two, compliance with the P C Building Code, officially much goes without saying that the Q R D must comply with the code. However, with respect to post-disaster standards, there may be, I give me a section number of the code. Uh some provision in the code that lacks compliance with requirements in certain circumstances. Given the significant added cost to meet these standards for the reservoir storage system, investigating the feasibility of this exemption may be warranted. Under water treatment, the report implies that there is a a double standard. There is municipal type system and a commercial type system, and the municipal type system is superior. And Mike has given me quite a lot of comments on that. I will, uh I am going to read them out. I wasn't going to because I know I have only ten minutes. Comments are, there's a quote, MSR has proposed a system that is reliable, robust, and can be expanded for future capacity. This is a municipal-grade system, complete with automatic controls and monitoring. It has full redundancy to deal with summer peak flows during the tourist season and minimal winter flows. This type of system can be constructed by a multitude of equipment providers and clear specifications when you go for a tender will support apples-to-apples comparison to the scope desired by the Q R D. This system is in need for the community. We've proposed housing this equipment in a building built by the treatment provider. It will be a metal building with ability to meet architectural needs limited only by shipping constraints. This is what referred to as a commercial structure and is selected by so many remote communities to be installed on a concrete pad for post-disaster reliability. This is chosen to reduce costs of shipping and fabricating a building on site, which is a cost constraint, and then to having equipment shipped and installed as a separate component. We would like to provide amenities to the building, however, that comes at a cost that is a want, not a need. On the Fin Bay Loop, looping of the water system has many benefits, as noted in the report. It also has multiple detractions. It comes at a significant cost of about a hundred and one point five million plus your engineering costs. The operator does not see substantial differences in maintenance costs. Yes, you have a cost of flushing with not having a loop system, and with a loop system, you have longer lines, more hydrants, more valves. So it's in her view is pretty much a wash. It won't provide a lot of development potential because the development potential is still limited by limitations of the sewer system. Future concurrent expansion of sewer and water together would seem to be a more reasonable approach. For the existing community, this is definitely a want versus a need, and certainly of a lower priority than the dams. If you get to the end of your project and there's money left over, what's a good consider?
Does that happen? Happening.
The reduced service area boundary, now this was one of the reasons I wanted the map. So in in the uh report, it says that at present, the service boundary contains, that's the Lund improvement contains all parcels that can feasibly be connected to the L W D. That is a misleading statement. It is true, but it's also true that the Lund boundary contains seventeen parcels that cannot feasibly be connected to the system are currently not taxed and will not be capable of receiving water from the new system. These are the parcels that were pro- proposed to be given the opportunity to opt out. I believe that ultimately the Q R D will decide the service area boundary. And under the legislation, if cost recovery is by parcel tax, parcels that cannot access a service cannot be charged. So the ones that would be eliminated are those that are shaded in um sort of greeny color.
Darker.
Yeah, a darker green. So you can see this leading parcel on the right, the top right. That property belongs to Lund Water Works District and would be transferred to the regional district. Most of it's in the watershed. Uh a lot, the properties along Fin Bay Road, which curves around there, there's four of them right along Fin Bay Road. Those properties would would not be serviceable if the loop doesn't go in. If the loop goes in, that those four parcels would be serviceable and then would be charged. At least three of the four already have wells, so they're highly unlikely to vote yes to a petition that's going to impose a twenty-four hundred dollar whatever tax on them. So that's that's a consideration there. The easement items, six and seven uh items, Sevillah Island and Fin Bay Road, we think we can work those out with the property owners with further uh consultations on that.
Frances, hang on one sec, directors, we're into the last minute. Does everyone agree?
Please.
Carry on. Everyone go, thank you, go ahead.
Okay. On Tlaman Nation land, now it does appear there may be some works that are outside of the current easement boundaries and and Tlaman is also aware of that. They brought up that maybe you're over the boundary. We realize discussions would be necessary to accommodate the infrastructure based with in new rights of way. Like it, it's entirely possible that whatever treatment system is selected will be a bit larger than the one that's there, and Tlaman would have to expand the easement. I don't, this whole issue of who is going to own it, that's something new to me. But let's just say it's as simple as an easement on treaty settlement land, and now you need a little bit bigger area for your new treatment. That would have to be negotiated with Tlaman. And we would rather not go to Tlaman now and say we're going to survey these existing easements to take in these possible encroachments. And that's considerable cost, and then go to them later and say have to redesign or re-survey because the design is going to require encroachment. Of course, they would have to agree to the the new infrastructure ahead of time. But we're hoping that will constitute resolving the issue as it's noted in the report because otherwise we're going to be surveying twice, and it's just a cost factor. Tlaman has been more than cooperative in agreeing that they're willing, they're uh in on this and they just want to be treated like everybody else. So I don't anticipate that there's going to be difficulty in getting them to agree a few more feet here or there. It wouldn't be huge, for sure. The utilization of I C I P fund for work on the dams, the the recommendation that this money not be used for the dams was was a surprise to me. The dam, there's lots of talk about liability and risk all the time in in local government operations. The dams probably present the highest risk to the community and highest liability to the regional district if you take over the system. I don't think you can take it over without dams because they're integral part of water system. So it's quite that the original application for the grant did not include work on the dams. Uh that went in, it was a scaled-down version of the McElhaney Report, and it went in before, not sure if it went in before the previous receiver, but it went in before the MSR report. Previous receiver did address the board, I think it was August of twenty twenty-three, and highlighted that the dam, that dam safety was a priority issue to address. And so although it's not in the approved scope of work under the grant, the province is well aware that the dam work is in there. Reason why. And they have said all that's required is an application for a change of scope. And as long as the revised system, upgraded system meets Canadian drinking water standards, that's the sole priority. Everything else in the grant can be modified with their approval. But they're not about to withhold approval to incorporate the work on the dams, particularly since the dam safety officer is insisting some work be done. So ideally, we would get, or you would get, the other money to do the dams. But what if you don't? What if you say, how can you use I C I P money? And oh dear, we didn't get any drift money. I I don't, I don't know what the thinking is behind that suggestion. If the I C I P grant could be used at some point, maybe before drift money becomes available, because that's probably two years down the road, given that programs, you have to apply for this, and then you wait six months, and then you apply, and then you wait six months. There might be some preliminary design or engineering work that could be, that the grant money could be used for. There's money in the budget for the for the dam. So that that one, I think, is um something that really needs to be carefully thought out. And I, you know, I didn't have a chance to talk to Al about it, but I I was surprised by that. So that brings me to a point that I've already emphasized, and that is the costs and and the concerns of users. When when Tom was the receiver, I think it was the very first open house, I was just a president there, he did an informal survey on how many people there would support the system. That's.
Frances, hold on one sec, um directors, we're now at the end of that five minutes. Do we wish to continue for another five?
I'd actually move that the receiver can have all the time she witnesses, so that we don't keep the illness. Yeah, there's going to be questions, and that's going to take time, too, so.
All right, so we're going to agree for another five minutes. I'm just about done. Um sixty percent, now this was an informal survey. I think the open house was fairly well attended, but sixty percent of the people they think they prepared to go ahead, which means forty percent did not, and that was that that lower cost. So right now, you've got information in your package that shows what the cost would be for scenarios one and two, which is uh one doesn't have the Fin Bay Loop, two has the Fin Bay Loop, three, which wasn't being considered because it was two, it's it would actually be, that's putting in the uh the basic plan, the reservoir, the large reservoir option B, Fin Bay Road line extension and uh north bay, north Fin Bay Road upgrades. That would bring the project cost to uh eighteen million dollars. That's including the ineligible costs, the the local community has to pick up all of. And it would, and the borrowing would increase. Uh under scenario one, it's three point, well, say, four million. Scenario two, it's five million, scenario three is seven million. So that's the concern, that all of these things that are good ideas, like the post-disaster standard for the reservoir, that's supposed to be about five to seven hundred thousand dollars. And the municipal versus commercial treatment facility, if you take the McElhaney twenty twenty-two estimate and compare it to the MSR estimate, that's about two point seven million. So and plus the engineering. And then the users are going to pay an annual fee, expected to be at least fifteen hundred dollars because it has to include that capital assets. How seven. So now you're talking four to five thousand dollars for a single service. And that's beyond what many residents can afford, but will be willing to pay. Adding to the costs, expenses for the upgrade elements that may be desirable but that community members may consider nonessential are not likely to garner support for the project. Lund is not asking for a second-rate system, nor do they require full municipal standards. They want a reliable, potable water system built to the needs of the community. They're grateful for the federal provincial funding and to the Q R D for recognizing the benefits to the community and being willing to consider taking the system on. To that end, we're asking for your support in moving forward. This is going on for years now. Delays have significantly impacted construction costs, and continued delays will further impact costs to the detriment of the Lund taxpayers. Work to build community support needs to be done, and that work depends on providing the most reliable information available on options and costs. That's all. Or it takes so long.
Thank you. Um I know your directors are going to have questions, so we'll start with Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, Fran, and uh are you, anything else? No? Good, okay, uh you know, there's lots of questions. I think it, you know, it's obvious that you've gone through most of the points that you could make. Um and there are some decisions that we can look at today, but some of these are longer term. So you made a point on density, and I and I think for this board, housing and 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 is a big topic in our entire region, and Lund has been identified or is one of the potential areas for increased density. Very few other areas in the in the region have a potential. Why? There's a sewer plant and there's a water system. Now, maybe, can you back me up on this or that? Our systems are limited, so that kind of future density is almost unachievable with the current status. Is that a true statement?
Um I'm not clear on what the sewer system's situation is, but I do understand there's some work that needs to be done. Al has brought that up, and that's another concern. So the users are going to take on a, or the property owners, a thirty-year debt for the water, and then ten years later, or five, or whenever that upgrade has to happen, they're going to take on more.
Thanks.
Um the, here is some added capacity in the system, and there's also uh you generally, when you meter, consumption goes way down. So it's not that nothing could happen, it's just that the idea of doing more lots is it's not that, it's rock out there. So even the cost to connect to the, you know, there's the cost to connect to the infrastructure, but the cost to develop your five, ten acres of rock is huge. And so I'm not sure how many people, I know some people talk about wanting to develop, but and I think Tlaman wants to think about doing something different on their land. And then they would, you know, somebody could use up the added capacity without subdividing.
Without us having, yeah, restriction. Um just just to be quick here, um I, it was interesting to focus on or or the dichotomy between the large engineering firms, we see them in all of our conventions, and like the small, you know, that that's the intuition of the community, I think, is like, that's the must-haves versus the Cadillac. So I appreciated that. Can you speak to the drift application? My understanding is, um so that's the dam, uh maybe you can get the money, not the uh the uh the other grant. My understanding is that it requires conversion to actually be awarded that grant.
Yes.
You understand it?
Yeah, so does the eleven million. You know, the it's the regional district that makes the applications. They're allowed to apply on behalf of an improvement district if the assets will be owned by the regional district by the time the project's done. So no, the improvement district can't get any money.
It's important for the directors to understand that. And then has there been, you know, how much consultation with Tlaman has there been? Like you heard my comments earlier, we have nothing. So you maybe just, I I know not the details, but has there been meaningful? So you maybe just, I, I know not the details, but has there been meaningful?
I, um, I've had some conversations about the dams, because when we were working on the Drift application, I, I thought it was important to let them know because it's on their property, right? Yeah, so there have been some uh, discussions. I'm, I don't know what's going on with the service agreement. I know that uh, Plamen wants a service agreement drafted with the regional district before too long. I've, and there have been some, there's a group, provincial, regional district, improvement district staff level meetings every couple of weeks, and sometimes Plamen comes invited to those. But um there, there's, there's just a lot of things to work out with them, and I personally feel like there needs to be more discussion with them. They're busy though, you know that, yeah.
Thanks. And then I just wanted to say, uh, really appreciate your point about what we need out there is four, three, two, one, like clean drinking water. And um, the other stuff can wait, right? We just want to get clean, clean water for.
And if I might talk to a question that you raised about the, what happens if it doesn't go through? That came up at the annual general meeting, and the drinking water officer was there. And um, somebody said, well, what happens if we don't do it, don't do anything? And what are the penalties? And he said, well, you would be on a permanent not a boil advisory, a water quality advisory, as we are now, and will be on until a second let type of treatment. You have to have two levels of treatment on a surface water system. Right now, there's only chlorination. With respect to the, well, what would be the penalties, the comment was, well, we don't really like to be punitive, because a lot of these improvement districts, they don't have any money. That's why they're not providing proper treatment. So um, what it would mean is the improvement district could reconstitute, they could probably get another board of trustees, but then they have to finance everything themselves. And it would be a shame not to take advantage of them, but they could. They could, they would then have to borrow. I mean, they were already, they're gonna have to borrow four million dollars anyway. So they might set different priorities. We've talked about that much, but I know there's a lot of concern about water.
It's okay. Thank you. Um, and I have next director Gisborne, then director Elliot. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Director Pauls. Thanks for coming in. Um, I, I know you've been working on this file for quite a few times. Uh, a lot of information in our package, and thank you for bringing more information, because that's where my thoughts were going, was wants and needs. Uh, the dams, they kind of threw a bit of a monkey wrench into the whole thing, and getting the, the water from Thulun Lake uh, is kind of where everything seems to be pointed at, is that's the source of water. And when I think of water systems, I think of water source, water treatment, water distribution, and then of course, cost recovery. When I took a look through all the figures, it's, one sec, I got the wrong thing open. Uh, it was roughly, was it three hundred and fifty cubic meters per day was, I think, the draw? That they were talking to pull from the lake, I'm seeing some of those.
It's a maximum.
Yeah, that's a maximum. And when I was looking through the Myrtle Pond Water System, there's a well there that apparently can do four hundred and thirty-six cubic meters per day, I think was something that popped up, and I, I know that's, it's an iffy well. Uh, so, but my question is more of, has there been any exploration of getting water from wells to feed that system? And then that could potentially avoid the whole uh, Thulun Lake and the dams and all the other kind of issue where we just go like, okay, that's one water source, maybe we could get other water sources, and then has that something that's been explored, or is that a? Our grants are
It's been brought up repeatedly, repeatedly. The problem is that we don't have the money to explore that. The province has said they don't have any money to give us. Plamen said they can't, they can't help out. You know, we did talk about working with them on that. I know they are doing work on groundwater, but it's not so that they can give Lund water. And there is a, there is actually a private developer on the property below the, um, see, the light green there is Lund, is Plamen's presently fee simple parcel, on the bottom half of Thulun Lake. And the property below that is privately owned, and that fellow, I believe, has a subdivision proposal in. And uh, he's going to be drilling some wells, and it, so it will be interesting to see what kind of flow he gets, and I'm sure he'll share that information. And then there's the water on the Fire Hall property, which is the left-hand corner of that big parcel, next to the first pink one.
Yep.
They have a, there is a well there, and it apparently produces really well. And there has been talk about, oh, well, maybe we should put more wells in. The engineer has said you have to be careful, because if you, there, there's a theory that there's a stream around, like a big stream that runs, yesterday I heard it came all the way from Tuxedo over, but
Nice.
And, but they, they, the caution that if you keep drilling more wells into the same seam, one can start robbing, Peter can be robbing Paul. But there's also a lot of cost to develop a well. It's not as simple as putting one on your own property, and then you have to get access in and power and usually pumps. And so it's been talked about as probably a good future option. But when you look at the overall costs of the project, the, the actual use of the lake water, other than you could get rid of the dam, but you couldn't get rid of the dam. I mean, could you imagine what the community would say if you drained Thulun Lake? You know, the dam has to stay there, so.
It's more, we could say to the province, hey, province, these are your dams.
Don't know how easy it is to do that, but certainly groundwater keeps coming up over and over, and we've just had to say, right now, we have money to do this work, and let's look at that in the future.
You don't have the money, is what I'm hearing, to
No, and I mean, really, that might be something the regional district could argue for more money to do groundwater exploration, but this, you know, this system has been given a lot of money over the years. You know, through the regional district, I don't know how many of those planning grants that were, they drilled it. You know, the improvement district drilled wells and, yeah, anyway.
I just know Lund is very different than Paradise Valley, which is, well, I live in a swamp.
Yeah, exactly. So there's water there, we're sure, but that's not what we're looking for, maybe even up right now, right, maybe we should be.
And, and then my last question is, um, I know you've been sticking with us for quite a while, and I know you're, you want to retire at some point. When is your end date, um, for, is your preferred end date for this?
I don't have one exactly, but um, when I took on this position, I was told it'd be twelve to fourteen hours a month, it'd be done in a year. So, gone over. My, except that the deadline keeps, my idea was to get the project to the petition stage, and then everything would be decided, and the regional district could but that getting to the petition station keeps moving and moving, so I don't know.
So if
It isn't forever.
So say we did a referendum, and it was at the next election, is just under a year and a half, that would be a, our deadline, I guess. Preferably before that.
Gisborne.
That's
Thank you. We next have Director Elliot, then Director Paul.
Uh, Chair, I'm gonna have to jump out. I'll attend with my headset, but my ultimate's not here yet.
Just walk at the dentist.
Director Gisborne, can you provide notification when you are no longer in the meeting, if you're going to be attending virtually?
Yeah, I have to turn off, and I will. Let's get connected.
Thank you. Yeah, Director Elliot.
Thank you, um, Frances, um. My question, I think you talked about um, ideas for lowering the scope that could lower the overall project cost, and those ideas you got from talking with the engineer. And um, they're, they're not included in any of the scenarios?
Oh, no, they, they are.
Okay, so those lower scope scenarios include the things you were talking about? And so the, the scenario one, which is the lowest cost scenario, would include the lowering of those scopes down to the, what the community needs, in your opinion?
When MSR was hired, the regional district paid for it, I think, I think Tom Day was responsible for hiring him. But that was his uh, that was the direction to him. The McIlhany report was considered too expensive. See if you can come up with ways to reduce the cost. And you know, when you, when you put the two side by side, it's not that things have been eliminated, it's that cheaper ways of doing some of the things have worked out. So the, what's not in the report, they're in the plan right now, that was in the McIlhany, is some of the um, distribution system upgrades, like increasing four inch lines to six inch. And that's pretty well all. So the big saving was in treatment. And then there was also quite a difference in the McIlhany cost to do the underwater line from Lund over to Fin Bay. In fact, there was so much difference that I questioned Mike Seymour, like, how is this possible? Another one says it's gonna be whatever, a million and a half. But McIlhany acknowledged that they had not really done any site work on that. And MSR has information from engineers with whatever expertise, you know, it's a different level of engineering, has confirmed that that should be the cost. I mean, the costs are all preliminary, preliminary estimates.
So when you say that should be the cost, you mean the low
Lower cost, yeah. So if you look at it, and I actually did that for a, a meeting with the regional district and the province, and I should have brought it, because it just compared. Here, here's why. Because I know Al has said, and you, you do question it. How did a, what, twenty-two million dollar project become a, what was then a twelve million dollar? Like, something's wrong here, right? But as soon as you take the capital cost down, you also take down your engineering costs, because it calculated as a percentage and so the basic system, or has the, the different treats, the, the lower standard, if you want to say, the smaller treatment plant, it, uh, it doesn't have the loop. And it has, and it doesn't have some of the and has a cheaper estimate to do that underwater line, otherwise it's very similar.
Okay, so none of the
Storage, sorry, that's the other one, storage.
None of the cost um, lowering ideas that you had are excluded from this, these scenarios. Okay, thank you. That's one of the things I wanted to check, because it seemed like you were talking about something that didn't maybe happen, but that, but it did, okay. Um, so uh, my question, I guess, is uh, of our scenarios, is there, is there a scenario that uh, you feel the community would support the most? Yeah, having dealt with them all.
I'd say probably the cheapest one.
I think so too, I just was asking.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Scenario one and scenario two is the Fin Bay Loop. Otherwise, they're the same. The question is about the reservoirs, and there is a question about that on post-disaster, but I, I'll give, make the building code section that uh, was like given to me. That I'll, that allows certain uses to get an exemption from post-disaster. You have to apply.
And then the idea you had around applying for a change of scope to include the dams for the um, grant application, was there any indication that that could result in a higher grant? Or was just a, just the same grant money used differently?
Excuse me, what?
Oh, sorry, I was just, I, I would speak towards expanding the scope when, when this comment is done.
So you're gonna answer at the later, okay?
I, I can answer it right now. So the I C I grant ha, you know, federal funding does come with stacking rules, so we'd have to explore um, expanding the scope to include the dams would then preclude uh, going for additional funding. It would make that ineligible for grant funding, because typically you cannot stack federal funding with more federal funding um, for the same project. But right now, if the dams are not part of the project's scope, um, you can strategically apply for funding for those.
Separate, separate projects, okay.
But the, the um, province has said, you need to do is apply for a scope change. Yeah, she's saying you, you can, it might not be the wisest thing to do, is what she's saying.
Might not be what?
The wisest.
Right now, there's eleven million dollars for the project, and you cannot stack this grant with another grant for the same project. So if you receive federal funding for an aspect of that project, you would be ineligible to claim against the original grant, but uh, it could be, and we would have to examine further, but treating them as two separate projects makes them eligible for um, exploring or funding opportunities.
The dams, you mean?
Strategically speaking.
But what if you don't get it?
So let's, let's go back to Director Elliot. Have you got the information you were looking for?
I did, thank you, your chair.
Thank you, uh, Director Paul.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, and it's a short question. I, I really appreciate all the information that we've got, it's a lot. And the other questions from other directors have been excellent. I just want to ask a question related to, um, it came up earlier on with the, you know, the ministry discussion. And, and I think I know the answer, but I, but I, but I'd like to hear if you have a thoughts on it. So one of, you know, if, if the community, you know, if it doesn't, if the conversion doesn't happen, and if the whole system got dissolved, which I think isn't in, in anyone's interest, and I think, you know, we're, we're trying to path, mark out a path here. But is it feasible at all for, given the density in the area, for people to do independent water systems? Because if the answer is no, well, then of course, that, that whole discussion, you know, then we just have to find a solution, it's that simple. But that's, that's the question, and I, I, you know, giving that I'm on Luskey Island, I, I don't know the answer, but it, you know, given the density, is, is that even a feasible pathway, that if, if this all went away, that people would just be getting their own water?
Think um, the, the idea that everybody could drill their own well is not a good option. There are people, there's several people in the service area that have wells. They, they don't pay towards the system, they get taxed, but they don't care. Some wells produce fairly well, but a lot of them have not, and probably there's certain areas, like it seems that you get further up to the coast, um, the, the water is not as plentiful. But the complication too is you have things like a hotel, and uh, you, you know, what would they do about water? Suppose they could come up, well, they might, because they have all that grown water on it, maybe they would provide it to others. There's so much um, liability associated with giving water to somebody else, like even to your neighbor, now you're a water system. I guess people could collect drained water.
Well, thank you for that. And yeah, for sure, as soon as you go beyond one house, then um, it becomes complicated. And I only ask because the, I think in our communications with the public, that is gonna come up, it will, it has come up, came up today. And I think we need to be clear, what, what would that look like? And there's always a solution. I mean, people can truck in water and have cisterns, but I mean, are those solutions, and, and, you know, they could be expensive, especially drilling a well that doesn't work is an expensive zero, zero gain proposition, and, you know, the costs would quickly go beyond twenty-four hundred dollars per parcel. One, you know, as soon as you bring a drill rig out. So um, I think it's just something that we need to uh, have information in hand, so that when questions come up, we can answer them. Thank you.
Yeah, there's been a discussion about point of entry systems, and the drinking water officer doesn't support those. Um, doesn't support them, uh, if the regional district, say, provided them, because the, the regional district would still have a liability. But apparently they use those in Singapore.
You have been listening.
Yeah, but that makes everybody, and you could, you know, you could have us, I mean, there are options, just would people want to go to that when they're used to turning their tap on and getting water? They go to the community well, or?
I'm sorry, what is point of entry?
Yes. Under your sink.
So, so the water is provided to your house, but there's, it's not necessarily potable, and then you have to treat it.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So I have one quick question, um, Ms. Lidday, and thinking about, you know, there's lots of different aspects to the projects, and I'm not a Lund taxpayer, so I have no vested interest in this. But the issue in a lot of people's minds, it strikes me, is not so much what the overall project is gonna cost, but what's it gonna cost me? And people's worry about their ability to pay, um, and still have the lifestyle that they chose, when they chose to live in Um, and still have the lifestyle that they chose when they chose to live in England. So is there any, has there been any look at creative ways to pay? Such as like a reverse mortgage where something could go on your title or, or some other means of. Rather than the homeowner having to come up with that money, because that's a lot of money. It's a lot of tax base.
No, there hasn't been, I, I think. I think there's provision in the act where somebody can pay their share upfront. Like if it's a thirty-year debt and over thirty years. You know, you would pay this much, you can pay your share. Because you wouldn't be paying all that interest. I know it's in the legislation, I forget how it's worded, but I think it's very complicated to administer. That's the only thing I know of, and I, I don't know, because. We're assuming that we wouldn't have anything to do with it. And so I haven't really checked into that, but the regional district, maybe there are creative financing. Solutions up there.
That's what we've been asking for.
Well, you know, whatever it takes, you know, because we all want success. Please say drinking water and affordability too, so. Anyway, thank you very much, I'm not. Your presentation. Always a joy to see you.
I, I encourage you to invite Mike Seymour to come to the meetings with directors. Great, much better than I am at explaining his work. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Brandon. Alright, so now we have no, uh, we are going straight on to item. Former item eight point two, but Director Gisborne isn't here.
Probably virtual by now.
Yes, okay.
So I, I'm, I'm still here if you can hear me.
Yes, yeah, thank you, alright. So now we have moved on to eight point two, which is consideration of options. Um, related to the potential conversion, and everyone has that information. Yeah, so. Is there any form of presentation? With Jones related to this, or are we just. Going to have, maybe have questions first before recommendations? So, okay, so Director Lennox?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and, and because there's twelve items and they're all over the map, right, and a lot of them are quite complicated. Um, I know that option two says we recommend to request further information, I mean, that's kind of where my mind is going. I think we could probably tackle a few of the more straightforward ones if we wish. But some of them are gonna, I think, we need more, if we can hear from our discussions today, we need more info, so. I guess option two is what I'm moving, but then we have, that means we have to go back in and look at the, at the ones that we. Defer to you, how you want to handle.
Okay, so we're in a, in a. Phase, so we can take opinions and do that prior to considering. Um, recommendation, Director Elliott.
I just wanted to talk, we're seeing in our. Uh, our, is here twelve, I guess it was. Some of them were part of the conversation earlier, such as, um. Does the board agree that all construction must comply with the B C building code standards? We've heard from our delegate that. It is possible to seek exemptions in some cases. And. Seeking those exemptions would require enough information to understand what exemptions. Seek whether you have any fallout that, you know, what the risks are affiliated with that, and are we okay with that? And so, uh, my question is, is. Do we feel ready to? Have that conversation in some cases? And I, I'm not sure I feel that way, I just wonder if, how, how everyone else feels.
Uh, well, okay, I guess we'd all have our own individual answer to that. Um, but let's just. Hold that thought, and Director Lennox?
Yeah, and sort of along those lines, I think for directors, if we look at the recommendations, so we've got, the report kind of. Does it two or three times, but the recommendations are what we're supposed to consider, that's page nine of seventy-five for. Mr. Williams there too, and. So because they, there are some of them do recommend things, some of them don't, so. When we're looking at it, what staff handles, then we can ask our staff why they are recommending. That's another point here too.
Anyone else under question? Though, Director Fall?
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, it's more comment, I guess, than question to follow up on, uh, Director Lennox, I, I agree, I think. What would be maybe one process we could do is to, to, you know, move the. The, uh, the, the, you know, seeking more information, but then review each of the items, you know, the twelve, and I think focusing on what those are. And maybe even the chair might even ask if there's any straw poll, is there any sense of consensus or? Uh, or, or divergence, so then, you know, not necessarily. To give a signal of which way we're going, but at least to see whether we're heading in the same direction, whether we need more information, and then just. Move on and, and address the, the twelve items so that staff have clear information of where. Uh, you know, what exactly is that extra information that we're seeking, and where is it more important to get ready to refine as much as possible?
Um, really good, um, suggestion there, so what I'm hearing is that we go back. I would say consider the options first. And where appropriate, we ask for more information, but we do that in kind of the sequence in which they're presented, so. Um, is, is there agreement that we proceed that way? Um, not seeing anyone saying no, so. We would start then on page nine of the report with option one. And that is, um, to. Recommend that the board consider a number of items for decision related to the conversion of, so it's a very general. Are you moving that, Director Lennox?
Sorry, just for clarity, Chair, I think just, in my mind, it's actually moving option two, which says. That we recommend we request further information on certain items. Okay, just, just so we're on, all on the right page, so I think that's the more appropriate. And then we go back and identify. Which might be all of them by the end of our discussion, but, but I think that's the right way to.
If Director Lennox moved that, I would second it.
Yeah, thanks.
And that is item two on the list.
Option two.
Sorry, option two. Okay, and the corporate officer?
Just for clarity, I think option two, within. We should add the items that you're asking for further clarity to, so perhaps it's open-ended and it's a conversation. That we go through.
So add.
To, to, to determine, so for example, item one is Q R D policy three point five that governs. Um, our acquisition. And there's a number of items within the policy that would have to be written. The case. And so the board would have to provide direction that it agrees to do that. So now you, here you would determine, do you want more information? Or do you agree to override? Uh, so does that make sense through the chair?
So, what is the will of?
Yeah, so should we start with item one, or sort of just, or do we back up to the option two? Is that what you're trying to get me to do?
I, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we might need further information on some of these items. Um, it might be best to start at item one. Um, agree to have a, a brief five-minute conversation about each item to determine if you need more information on those. Uh, is that a good process?
That sounds great. Are we in agreement? Yep, okay, not saying anyone's saying no.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so focusing then on item number one.
And thank you, Chair, I might suggest that we go to page five for like. For more information versus direction. That's where we start to hear, on page four, we have sort of questions that need to be asked. And discussion items start on page five and it explains it a little bit more.
James? So. We'd like to address this item, Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, um, so we'll try to be as brief as possible. This one, as the corporate officers who adeptly identified, has many elements. And I think this is one where we need more information about what specific. Elements of our policy, which is thirteen pages, by the way, if you want to look it up. Um, which one of those we would have to override, and what does override mean, and. Right, there's a due diligence piece there, so that's my thoughts.
From Gopson, thank you, so I have added item one under option two.
Ah, I see what you're doing, okay.
Hey, Director Elliott?
Um, also under item one. Um, I'm assuming it's our requirement to have things at a certain standard before we take them on that we're referring to under item one. Um, so which exact standards? Would we be? Yep, requiring or, or, or. Accepting under item one as a change to what would be. Want to comment on item two?
Um, um, let's finish with item one for.
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, I, I agree that what would be good is, and I, I assume that the, you know, what we're asking staff. To do is come back with a set of, here's the specific things that you would need to override in the policy, and then we would, if we wanted to do it, we could make a motion to say, yeah, we're going to waive those. Policy elements, and that would help us understand, I, I read through the policy. And there's some things I thought, well, that's for sure, but this, I don't know, I mean, maybe, maybe not, so having staff really say, lay it out, and then. We can make a deliberative choice, and that way it's a, we're gonna have to do that anyway, so I think that getting more information on what the specifics are. On this is a, a good thing to add to our, uh, building up our motion.
Are we all good with that? Alright. Um, we don't require a separate motion on each thing, do we?
Thank you, Chair, I'm building the motion as we go. And so, so that we can. Yes.
Okay.
I, I won't display it, though, I will just.
Okay, thanks, good thing you're helping us.
Okay, so there, is everything, everyone okay with item one? Good, alright, item two. We comply with B C building code standards, Director Lennox?
I think it's the same, for me, the same, uh, issue is learning more, we heard from, uh, the receiver about. We just need some definition on post-disaster standards versus the, you know, I need to know more for personally, yeah.
Thank you, what I heard is that we might want to explore possible exemptions.
Right, thank you for paraphrasing, yeah.
Anything else on item number two?
I'll just follow up. Thank you, sorry, I should be. So excited. And as follow-up for the exploring exemptions. Ones that we could explore without causing dire harm. You know, things that are feasible to be, you know. Exempt, not things that are on, like, don't waste time on things that are completely infeasible. But where we would could feasibly ask for an exemption, where are those? Because this explains very well why they think we shouldn't have any, but I'd like to know more about, well, what if we decide we'd like to pursue a few?
Thank you, Director Elliott, Director Fall?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and just very briefly, I, I, I think, you know, there's certain limits to what we can do, I mean, in principle, we. Have to follow B C building code, that's the lay of the land, but if we can ask for exemptions, and as Director Elliott said, if there's things that are. Bigger bang for the, you know, for the effort, if we say this exemption would really help bring costs down X amount, and. And then, you know, we could try to go for that, um. And I think that helping us understand where those lines are is, is a part of my understanding of what we're doing here.
And it was just, I just would like to add, so that would, you know. Ideally, applying for an exemption would allow us to still be within B C building codes. And then.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on item number two? Seeing no man, item number three. Um, regarding the municipal style.
Yeah, um. Where I'm at now in my mind, I, I appreciate what the report says. I guess you heard from the community, our kind of thinking on the matter is the must-haves and the commercial. System that meets those minimum kind of requirements to get two-stage treatment is what we can afford, so. This one seems a little more, uh, straightforward to me, but I'm prepared to listen to the other directors if they'd like more information. Um, obviously, we, when we start to get more information, we get into the technical aspects of water treatment and. You know, that's why we have our expert staff to, to make these, but. I think you've already heard the reasons why the community is leaning, and, and I'm leaning towards the commercial.
Okay, so I'm not hearing a request for more information in there, so. Uh, anyone else on item number three, Director Fall?
Just as a question, because, you know, I was trying to figure out that, that, that difference, and I, I totally support what Director Lennox is saying, maybe a question. To our corporate officer, through our chairs, that would, having a, basically at least. A little short information on what exactly this would mean. Because, because it might be something for communicating with the public, it might be useful to even have a few bullet points to say, this is what. A municipal's package is, and here's what a commercial one is, and this is what they cost that's different, and this is what you get. For one that you don't have in the other, and how they're both meeting whatever requirements there are and so on, I think that. Uh, maybe useful for our public communication piece, even if we're, you know, the community's. Sort of pushing in a certain direction, but that's a. A, a long-winded question, but maybe the corporate officer can. Let me know, I, I main part of the question is how much work would it be to ask for a bit more information on this?
Uh, thank you through the chair, that might be better. Kind of buyer manager of capital assets.
Can whoever's speaking, please speak up?
You can be loud, can't you?
I can be loud.
Good.
Yeah, so the municipal style facility is.
Much better.
On slab on grade, re-engineered steel building to B C building code standards. The, uh, the, the package, the commercial grade system that was presented is simply in a C S A approved. Insulated building on a gravel pad. So there could be options to potentially put. That style of treatment trained within a B C building facility. But maybe need some direction moving forward as to what your.
It's, thank you for that, and it sounds like at least there's a, a pretty good set of information for some basic stuff, but maybe there's other. I don't know if it's for right now, but it sounds like there's maybe a question down the road, at least of. If there's a, it sounds like almost a hybrid, right, of the commercial style, which is, seems a bit less expensive, but meeting, you know. Some other standards.
So is that hy, is it that hybrid model that you're looking for more, more information on?
Well, I guess if our, uh, uh, manager of asset management. Has some of that information and believes it's not, uh, too onerous to provide, I think it would be useful to help us. Be clear, because it sounds like it's something that's gonna come up.
Yeah, through the chair, I think. I would like to discuss this, Francis had brought up some of the suggestions that were being by MSR, Mike Seymour. Uh, because again, he had. He has proposed the commercial grade facility versus the municipal's not facility. So I think there could be a conversation we had with MSR, just as a hybrid model, that would be more cost-effective, but that would still. Need the treatment quality.
Okay, then I hear that as a request for information.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Great, anything else on this item before we move on, Director Elliott?
Stuff, maybe a question or point of clarity, so option two about requesting, um. Possible exemptions from building code, would that be necessary then to implement, to, to do the hybrid model in option three? Or are they separate things?
Uh, through the chair. The, I believe we're talking about these separate things, item two is more focused on the storage tanks themselves. And looking at an exemption from, as, as opposed to disaster facility, it does also to be to the public water treatment. Uh, so in the event that we could explore the exemption on item two. We may be able to look at possibly downgrading, uh, this style of facility under item three. But again, uh, to not. To not understand what's required to apply for an exemption in the B C building code. For, uh, public water treatment storage facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so moving on then to item four, um. And this is regarding, uh, a loop system being incorporated. Into, uh, into the distribution system. Uh, are you satisfied with that, or do you want more information, Director Lennox?
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm eager to hear from the other directors, if you need more information, any of these items, I'm totally willing to let you, you know. Let it flush out, but this one, again, since the beginning, the loop system, you've heard from, again, from the receiver that. That's a, that's a want, it's not a, a, a must, and it adds significant costs to the system, and we have other mitigation that can be done to. To flush the system, et cetera, so. My mind, I'm, I'm there, but I appreciate if you're not. Anybody else?
Thoughts, Director Fall?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and I guess just like the previous one, it may be useful, not, maybe not asking for more information, but if, if our. Manager of asset management could kind of just. more information, but if if our manager of asset management could kind of just clarify at least what that means. And I guess one of the, if I was a resident, that one of the questions I'd have is, I understand the cost, keep the cost down, don't do the loop system. But could we loop it later? So, you know, that kind of question comes up, could if we, you know, ten years down the road or if we're finding stagnation, you know, cause it's about, and we've had this in other water systems too, is, you know, if you're at the end of the line and you say, well, yeah, but I I get this this issue and it's not flushed enough. So I I I don't know, like, maybe similar question to the last through our chair. Um, would that be a lot of in, a lot of work to just pull that together, not necessarily getting new information, but just describing and just summarizing again, like a two or three bullet points of, you know, maybe not not three bullet, few bullet points that says, what is, what does that mean? And is it possible to extend it at a future date? So it's a cost savings measure. You get this, but you lose that. And can we uh extend it?
So I guess um Mick is at uh.
Through the chair, I'm looking for a cost benefit analysis of the loop system versus the one you being the system.
Oh, just the difference.
The difference being.
Yeah, I I think what I'm asking, I guess, and is the question is, you know, cost benefit analysis would be sounds like a fair amount of work. And if we're already, this because it costs, it seems like, you know, and I'll 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 leave it to Director Lennox to kind of see see, give the community perspective, but even if it's just um, you know, at this point, even if we're, say, we're leaning towards not looping it, but uh mostly for public uh information to be able to say, here's what that means, not looping it, what do you get from looping it? And what do you pay? So, you know, this would cost this much more and and the the numbers are probably in the M S R report, but it would cost you X dollars more to do it. And can we, is it a closed door? Like, once we put it in, if we put in a non-loop system, is it designed that we could, you know, complete the loop at a future date? Is it a matter of adding pipe and the pump or whatever, or is it, you know, part of the design and you can't do it easily?
So that would be the information that's being sought. And is that okay? Within a reasonable amount of work to provide that?
Through the chair, I believe we can provide you some bullet points on the items. In in regards to the loop system, I mean, um staff recommendation um having included a number of points as to why we feel the system should be looped at this time. Over happy to provide that information again, more bulleted ones.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on item four? Seeing no hands. Moving on to item five. Um, this is about the boundary reduction, Director Lennox.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Chair. I think this is one where we need some more information. You heard from uh Miss Ledre that um what we think, what's in the report might be not a hundred percent accurate with those who are in or out, so we just need to clarify that, I think. Makes sense.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And briefly, just to add to that, I I agree. I think what I heard is that there's a number of conditions and it would be useful for me to see, you know, if is it uh maybe useful for us and again for the public to know, okay, this is many, this is how many are in on this system. These are the number that just have their own and they're not likely, or they may, you know, they can choose it. These ones, it's difficult, you know, so just so we can understand why, you know, what would be the rationale for uh changing the service boundary? Cause I think um you know, some people might be really happy to not be in, and there might be other, you know, if we did change it, and there will be others that might be very unhappy if they're not in, and I think those are two uh, two different conditions.
Oh, no. Okay, so we can move on then to item number six. And that is um uh expecting government to work with receiver to resolve the Sevilla or Sevillah Island.
It's probably Sevilla at one point, but yeah. So Chair, yeah, on on this one, we have somebody that's a user from the island here that may want to ask us a question later. Um to me, this does, I mean, it's clear, seven to seventy-five, item six says it has to be resolved prior to conversion. We need to resolve the issue on Sevillah. It's complicated. There's probably thirty or more years of history there, and there's sewer and hydro right away is that are relevant to this discussion. I don't know any more of the details, but there's got to be a way to allow people who are already paying their fair share as users and just like everybody else to have that um kind of solidify their their access to the land system, so um.
So you're okay with the recommendation?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm seeing nods around the table, around that.
Thank you.
So item number seven, um.
Yeah, I
Fire hydrant?
I I have limited knowledge of this, so I think we need a little bit more info for the other directors. Um, I think it's solvable from what I understand, but I'm not not involved with it. Um, but from my limited knowledge, um, and again, it has to be resolved, right? So it's a, it's an easement, same type of an issue, but um I think this one's a little more straightforward.
Okay, so you're looking for information toward a resolution. Everyone good with that? Okay, so item number. And that is to investigate and resolve all these. Ease away and rights away on Tom and all that.
Very simply, heard very clearly through this whole discussion, we need to nail that down. It's that's why things are are delayed in some manners, but that's okay, right? We're at the forefront of of this process, so let's get it right.
Okay, so you're supporting the recommendations. Okay, anyone else on this item? Seeing nothing. Okay, item number nine, um and that is that we not utilize um the ISIP program for a good damn work, so you're okay with that?
No, actually, I'm gonna speak sort of, I guess, not against it. I understand all the elements. Um I really concur with the receiver. Um, I'm a safety manager, and this is about risk. And it's about what's highest risk right now, highest consequence to the community. And we've had a clear report from the dam safety officer. We have mitigated it, so thank you for doing that. But it 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 doesn't make any sense for me not to take care of the basics. We need the dam to supply the water. It needs to be safe. I do think we should leverage other funding opportunities, et cetera, but this one is a no-brainer for me that we should try to as the corporate officer said, either leverage the existing grant or apply for separate streams, but need to fix the dam.
Director Fall and then Director Elliott?
Thank you, Chair. And I I I do think getting some uh the information our corporate officer gave us earlier in the meeting in on paper, so that again, for us and the public to be really clear. And I think, you know, there were thoughts of pros and cons of doing this, you know, that there's a risk to going forward with using it in terms of accessing other uh grant opportunities. Uh, but there's also a risk of what if you don't get the other grants? I think understanding that, and again, and once we make a decision, uh, we'll we'll need to clarify that with the public, and I think doing that deliberatively with a bit more information would be really good, because it's a big one if uh, you know, the the big, they're big, these are big things, so.
So uh. So for this one, it would be more information on expanding the scope of the project, and that would exclude us from applying for other funding.
Yeah, it's kind of pros and pros and cons of 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 the of uh doing it.
Uh, in addition, I'm just curious about what are the chances of us being able to apply for that additional funding and getting some answers before we try to include, like, can we do one before the other, so we have more certainty, or is that not?
Um, thank you through the chair. I, I do think it would require us to sort of investigate, perhaps perhaps not expanding the scope right away. The timing of that, if if it's needed, or if we can apply for other grants in the meantime, because funding streams open up all the time. Um, we're investigating another one that became opened up recently, so.
There are benefits for these delays, maybe.
That's what I'm hearing. I do think more information on uh the stacking is allowed within this grant and uh and the benefits of keeping the project separate or um including them all under the I T I P if needed.
Y'all agree on that one?
Yeah, I just want to reflect the comment that was made before about the possibility, which I'm sh- I'm pretty confident the corporate officer was intending to look into anyway. But of uh making the dam issue an independent issue, whether uh the senior governments who might give us more money would uh go for that.
I guess we have to wait and see.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's a, there's all sorts of questions that are coming up in my mind, and I appreciate that others are articulating those questions. And I'm looking forward to.
Well, and you know, this is the first time in my recollection that we've really gotten into the meat of what this is all about, so it's a really interesting process.
Interesting is one way to put it, okay.
So we're good on item number nine then? Okay, item number ten, um.
Chair, I think it's the same, same approach. Uh, they relate to each other, so I think it's fair to let our staff explore. We should explore the drift if it's available, but um and what parameters are under, so it kind of relates to item nine as well, I think.
So this is the.
Different streams of funding.
So are you proposing more information? Because the most, or the the recommendation is to direct staff um to work with the one to pursue.
Yep. I think we still need that. My opinion is we still pursue.
I'd like to support that then. Everyone in agreement with that? Yeah, Director Fall?
Uh, thank you. And I mean, I think we're probably uh in in certainly in in favor of of doing this, but I but I think, you know, relating grant proposals and so on, it might be useful. But I guess a a question I have, um, if we know it, is uh, is there any timeline issues for uh applying for drift funding that we need to keep into account?
June twenty-seven?
Conversation with L W P uh to comply for funding under stream one of the year program, which is for foundation award.
That's smart.
So we have, we have.
Okay, so we're good on item number ten, and that is just.
It's that whether it'll get back in time, I guess, for the time constraints is now. We need to pull that out and do it separately.
Thank you so much. We do have a board meeting coming up, uh on the twelfth, I believe, so. We do have a special one on there, so we could amend our notice to include if it was even more we need to.
Timing wise.
Okay, so we have meetings that we can put in.
It can get hot if we leave that door closed.
We're good on item number ten to number eleven, and we're getting very near the end. We're getting there, um. Uh, post, and that is to postpone a decision regarding debt cost per recovery.
I concur. I mean, obviously, we're, I mean, with the information's out there, I think we should postpone this, because it's like the final kind of thing to go to the community with. We need all the other information so that we can make that one. Postpone is one thing we still are gonna have.
Uh, and just briefly, we we have had that item before us before, and we had some discussions, so, you know, we, I don't think, um you know, I don't think we want to make a final decision until we have all of our other uh ducks lined up a bit.
Good, so we're okay with number eleven. So moving on to number twelve. Um, that we not explore a treatment facility, uh et cetera, et cetera. Et cetera, et cetera. Okay, let me read the et cetera, et cetera. Um that we not explore a new water treatment facility and through land storage reservoir tank located and sited on lands wholly owned by the Cofed Regional District, but rather are constructed within existing easements and rights away on co-alignment owned the simple properties that have been applied for conversion to treaty settlement.
Thanks, Chair. Can I ask our staff, maybe this one was sort of even more complicated in my mind. Can we just ask Mick to touch on this uh item here? Um, and I guess my question is from your report, and it's a good report, is it it looks much more expensive than kind of time-consuming to move the treatment site to property that's owned by the water. Is that?
Yeah, well, you're the chair. That's that's correct. There there was an option identified in the map in the report on putting the new treatment facility and storage tanks on the adjacent property that is older. There would be cost implications because of essentially new intake. There are benefits about site, but I guess of savings.
And maybe for the follow-up, I would assume that that'd be outside the scope of the grant as well. Uh, in that context where it's kind of another, it's a separate ask, is that correct? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Director Fall next and then Director Elliott.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And I think we we see in the report, I mean, the the, you know, cost is is the number one turning hurdle here, turning point, and I think the we hear, we see in the staff report, this would be uh fairly costly for, and we would, you know, you would gain, there are some benefits, three meters more always helps and so on, but how much is that, you know, if I think for the average water user, they're gonna say, yeah, but is the water get to my house the same, more or less? Um, so, you know, they're gonna care about that. So I think this one, in my mind, uh, the only thing I would actually say is when we, when we actually bring this to before us to approve, I would suggest that we add the words, you know, do not not explore a new water treatment facility at this time. And the reason I I suggest that is because this is contingent on the other items. When we talked about, you know, we expect the province to resolve easement issues and so on with Flatman, our our Flatman partners uh and neighbors that um you know, there may come a point if that, if there's issues that a new treatment may, new treatment site may may need to be explored. But I think uh I I'm understanding, and you know, I'm looking for nods from uh those who are paying in the system that I don't, but the um you know, that at this time, cost is effectiveness is the most uh uh is paramount, and if if it can work out with its Latman, that seems to be the by far the most cost-effective uh issue, and and that's the way to go forward if we can work it out. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're supporting then, you're supporting then the recommendation at night.
Yes.
Director Elliott is next.
Um, Director Lennox? I don't mean to throw wrenches into everything, but but anyway, I think that um before we can actually choose, we should probably as a board, sit down with co-alignment to discuss potentials around partnership and what that, that might look like. Anything we do that increases costs, of course, increase the cost for all users, including co-alignment. So they will have incentive to partner with us in the most equitable way and the um cost effi- effective way. But if we're going ahead to make decisions and we haven't had a conversation with them about it, I I think that's just the wrong way to to go about it.
Okay, and maybe the first step then is to address the recommendations, because we still need a lot more information, so it might be prudent to get that information.
I'm saying we need some information and a meeting.
Yeah. I hear you. It's it's doing it in the right sequence, so. Okay, so I think I had Director Lennox next and.
Thanks, and thanks, uh Chair. I was just gonna support what Director Falls is getting at, is that it's at this time. To the point of the other directors and the points that we've made, they're, hey, I'm hoping there's five different other ideas out there we haven't talked about, or, you know, purveyors of water that come along and want to supply, but at this time, I think we should stick to the basics here of our must haves instead of would be nice to have.
Everybody in agreement with that? Okay, so yeah, corporate officer. You've got it all put together.
Thank you through the chair. I just thought maybe for some, I would offer a process now, or we we had a lot of conversation about this. We could consider moving a block, um, under option one, I have item six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, with the words at this time inserted in twelve. And then under option two, uh, we have more information for item one, two, three. Uh, four, I have a question mark, um, because it's the loop system, so we're gonna say four, five, seven, and nine. Is everybody, did I capture your conversation correctly, Director?
That is the way my.
Followed you there.
Um, so if you are feeling comfortable, you guys can move that all as a block, or you can consider each item separately.
What is your pleasure? I'm comfortable.
Did we not have a motion for option two, and we were building which information? Should we not do deal with that first? And then anyone, any of those numbers that didn't make it into option two, we can go back and move option one. I don't, I just.
Corporate officer?
Whichever is preferred by the committee.
I just thought we had a motion on the table.
We were building a motion. Now I have a, so I have suggested uh a more fulsome motion, option two with item one, two, three, four, five, seven, nine. We were building a motion. Now I have a, so I have suggested a a more fulsome motion, option two with item one, two, three, four, five, seven, nine. More information and then blocks item under option one, item six, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve with the words at this time under twelve.
Yeah, I'm prepared to move it as as a block. Appreciate your work.
You discussion on the motion.
Yeah, just briefly, um, as we said, this is the first time all the directors have had a chance to really digest all of the tangents of this, the octopus that keeps moving around. And um and I appreciate the staff's work and their commitment to get us some more information. It is time for us as directors to really understand this material and, you know, um we're gonna raise our hands, we better know what we're talking about. So, and I thank everybody for coming. I know there'll be a question period soon.
Yeah, thank you. If I can show my two yes word then, um, we don't tread into operational waters typically. So being able to discuss these operational issues because of the overlap, it's not a fine line between policy and operation. There's all these, you know, interfaces and stuff. So I I found it to be a very interesting conversation as a non-resident of Lund even, so there.
Until your improvement district is next.
Um, Director Fall?
I'll also be brief. I really want uh want to express appreciation for staff for really laying this out clearly because it's a you know, for for my perspective, it's this big, you know, it it's clear in a very high level, but the nuts and bolts of what exactly we want to line up so that we uh do the best thing we can for the users as well as for the whole regional district and balance these costs and bring something forward so that people can have good water. And I really appreciate our corporate officer for paying close attention and putting forward the motion before us, because I think it's really nice in my mind that we can already, you know, address hopefully several of these items, almost half of them. And then, you know, get more information on the other half and move it forward so that the the public can see we're trying to advance where we can, and we're trying to hold off and do our due diligence, get as much as we can to provide the best conversion that's possible.
Director Fall? Any other discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing no hands. We will vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Karen, you asked. Well, directors, this now brings us to correspondence.
This is a question, question, Chair, about the last, just to be clear. So we voted, was that both items together, moving and more info all in one shot? Okay, just to be clear that we didn't have two motions.
I understand, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so correspondence, we have three items of correspondence. Um, is there any business arising from this correspondence?
Cool.
Yep.
Request from the Museum and Archives Association.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair, so six point one, that's what I was just reading. There is an ask.
But we named someone to that.
Yes, I was gonna say they're requesting somebody be appointed to.
Okay, so Director Lennox is pulling that item of correspondence. Um, anything else? So, okay, I um six point one becomes seven point one. And um.
Six point two as well.
Six point two, okay. And seven point two, and pretty soon we're gonna need to take a few minutes file break. Um, but let's go to seven point one now, and that's regarding the museum, and they're looking for a partner.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I I see the ask. It says if if we agree to become a partner in the project, so there's actually two two requests really, then they would ask us to supply a member of council, uh actually the board uh to act as a liaison. So um I don't know if staff understands this request a bit better than I do. But the project. So I'm just trying to understand the project.
I can, I can speak to this very, very quickly here. Uh, is Chair, is we need the chairs that would allow?
Hi, welcome.
Hello, uh, my name is George Wall. I'm the president of the Cottet Museum and Archive Society. Uh, we have for the last six or eight months, I guess, November, we put together our first presentation to Talom Nation about the opportunity for a new museum. And everyone, you know, we're moving that process along now for what a new museum could look like and would look like, and and we'd like to go to press. And and so we already have someone from city council has been appointed to our project development committee. Uh, not a management committee, as some people have called it previously. Uh, so um if we get, if we had a director also appointed, then we could move forward with grant funding applications with different things that said, yes, we have the support, we have the year, we have project uh committee, uh myself, uh Bert Finnemore, previous executive director of the Cottet Museum and Archive uh museum structure. Uh, we have, uh, the city has appointed, uh, George Dow. Drew Blaney sits as an advisor, um Hannah Timothy is the the nation exec council member on the committee. Uh, and we, the museum also has an advisor in Mike Robinson, who is formerly of the Glenn Bo Museum and the Bill Reed Gallery. So lots of experience, lots of uh players who understand how to get things done. Um, we're trying to move forward. Yes, that's where we're at.
That's a quick follow up.
Thank you, George. Yeah, follow up, go ahead.
Uh, you made a point, um, trying to bring all these people together. We learn lots that when organizations make a request that that support then leverages higher levels of support. Is that where you're going?
That's correct. That's correct. And we're not asking for any kind of, this is not a financial ask. Purely a, we have someone we can communicate directly with and we caught up to speed on what's going on with the project. And then when we uh when we go forward with the grant funding, takes a look at it, says, yes, this has no conflicts with us. Please proceed with finding this money. Uh, we're looking at twelve million dollar project uh ish. So, yeah.
Thanks, Director Elliott.
Thank you. So um I think what we would need to do is direct staff to put this uh to the regional board meeting to make an appointment, is that?
Process we would need, Corporate Officer?
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, you caught his neck.
Thank you, Threethi Chair. We, uh, the committee can make a recommendation to the board to participate in the project um committee and uh or in the project and appoint a member. And then that would be elevated to the board for production through resolution.
Okay, so then are you interested in being one of them?
I I would, I would stand for that.
Uh, hello, Director Gisborne. I just wanted to let you guys know that I would also be interested, but I, if Director Lennox wants to, I'd also be happy with that.
Hey, thanks. When we get to that point, we will hold that thought. Director Gisborne, what I'm thinking now is that we actually have two issues before us. One is, do we want to participate in a project? And I'm just in my head thinking, do we really have enough information to know what all that entails or what commitments will be expected of us down the road if we agree at this preliminary point? So I might ask, um, George, since you are here, is it anticipated that we are making a full commitment at this point by appointing someone or merely that we're merely making a commitment to appoint somebody?
Making a commitment to appoint somebody. And then any further ask from the regional district would be another presentation from the museum. This is just a, like, my museum board struck a committee. I happen to sit on that, and I'm the voice of both. So, so here I am with all the information. Uh if this goes forward, we start to roll in some money, then it, then it would, there may be more involvement with the regional district. Uh, right now, we just need we just need to say that we corresponded with you. You either yes or noed us, and then we can move forward with the rest of our plans. So.
Thank you.
And and the time commitment is low. It'd be once a month, and I can give you the spark notes version. You don't even actually need to attend the meetings.
Well, don't tell us that.
I would love to attend the meetings. You can give me spark notes uh after.
Okay, thanks, thanks, George.
Yeah, so thank you. Uh, right now, the request is to partner um to join a partnership to seek funding. So there's no financial commitment or anything like that to commitment that would be made at committee and board would be partnered to seek funding.
Okay, thank you.
To my original questions, perhaps what we should do then is have um the folks who are interested in uh, I personally, I'm in favor of us participating. I see no risk and only gain for this. Um, the folks who are interested in perhaps being that representative could do a small speech, and then we could vote on who we appoint.
So are you recommending that we refer this to the next committee meeting?
I'm recommending that here at the committee of the whole, we have a recommendation. In order to do to do that, we should probably hear from the candidates.
Corporate Officer?
Thank you. Well, why don't we forward this to the board meeting for consideration there? How we forward the letter to the board?
You had time to prepare that way.
Oh, I'll be prepared.
We'll have an all candidate.
Be careful what you ask for.
Okay, so I'm better, we're unanimous on that.
I was going to move it to the June board meeting. Is that?
So we can, okay, all right. So um, seven point two was the formerly six point two?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I pulled this because um it's an invitation from province or the government about some name change coming up within our regional district. And I wanted to ask staff, is there um, is this, is this what's, are they consulting with us, or what's the decision process that's being um happening here through this letter?
Corporate Officer? I suspect that they didn't hear back from us. Um, they put out a request for uh feedback a couple of months ago or in February. And I suspect we didn't respond. So now they're asking again, do we have any feedback um before?
August eighth.
August eighth, yeah. So is this just simply an opportunity to provide feedback if we have any? I know um as far as the Texeda um names are concerned, I put it out there so that people are aware that this is 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 on the radar screen, and I have not heard anything bad. So.
Savory's same thing.
Yeah, Chair, I was just gonna say that Thothec is already in the vernacular. We're using it in our O C P update, and um it's really cool to move on from that old you know, colonial name and use the proper name. Like it.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to understand where we were at. I'm good now. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're still not agreeing to send any input unless, do you want to send a letter saying that we um support the changes this proposed, or do you want to just simply not reply? What do you wish?
So my, I'm assuming that the province has a process that includes consultation where they feel that consultation is required, and they're not and and that was part of my question is, is is this a is this part of consultation? Are we expected to reach out to our membership? Are we or did they, they did, did they do that? Or that was what I was seeking clarity on. Um, if we don't have objections as a board, we could respond. Um, I think it would be more important to respond if we were hearing objections, and if we're not, then um then I think that's a great thing. Uh the the areas where these names are being changed are common lands themselves, which is really, they should I don't even know why they have to ask us to change stuff in their own lands. And then there was Savory and Texeda, so I would defer to the area representatives for for those areas.
Uh, Chair, I was just gonna say that they're requesting any comments we have on behalf of our community, right, with the official name changes. Personally, there's enough uh communication out there that's that's necessary. We don't need to clog up the system. I think that the community fully supports it. I haven't heard anything to the contrary. I'm happy.
The letter seems to be more of a courtesy.
Yep.
Say.
But if you'd like to direct, sorry to interrupt, but to Director Elliott's point, if we had concerns, I would be the first to to voice them, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. I think there's something to be said for uh making positive statements. And in that respect, I would support a very brief expression of our support for this. Doesn't cost much. Yeah, you know, I'm not looking to give more work to staff, but uh you know, I my thinking reflects back on, you know, the unresolvedness of uh another question with regard to a name in our region, which will no doubt uh carry on until it is resolved. But um I personally support this, and I I support it consciously and deliberately, so. And I think there are enough people in our community that uh that do that to uh, you know, make a positive statement of support.
So are you moving, um, are you making a motion then that we send a a very short letter supporting?
Yes.
Proposed name change?
To do that.
Okay, seconded by.
That's the second guess, I would say.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Um, discussion on the motion. Seeing no hands, all in favor? Oh, yes. Director Fall?
Uh, yeah.
Sorry.
Very brief comment.
Um, I don't know if your hand is up.
So, yeah. It's just, it's just my headset, sorry. Uh, yeah, my thoughts on this are, I'm fine with the letter of support. I just think a bit about the provincial referrals that we get, and quite often we respond to those by saying, you know, our board has no objection. And I'm just thinking maybe in the future we could do similar things, just, hey, we get a provincial referral on name change, we give a response, so we have no objections, and we move forward. Uh, it's a minor thing, but either way, uh, I'm in support of the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Director Gisborne, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Hi.
Mostly. Um, okay, so now uh we're on to reports, eight point one. Um, proposed slalom and land within the Lund community watershed. So, um.
Some questions first?
That makes sense. We will ask questions before going into recognition. Yeah, and how about a five minute break? But mind you, I'm thinking the board meeting starts at four. So. Okay, five minute break. We'll be back at three thirty.
Such a strict five minutes. It's two bathrooms, there are two bathrooms on the other side.
Yeah.
And the need to, um, um, uh, confirm, you know, existing easement, uh, location.
Yes, so my understanding is some of the infrastructure is not within the easement. So if all we get is the existing easements, they're not adequate for the existing infrastructure or for the upcoming plan. So that needs to get sorted out is all. I say it needs to go in the letter. In relation to this issue.
Okay, so you're moving that? And is there a second or, or that motion? Second, no, I'm not.
Second answer, discussion.
Sure, I think, I don't know if it's out of order, but I just think materially this recommendation is quite different than the work with the Lund Water Improvement District and all the different facets with slum. I, I think we should keep aside. I appreciate what Director Elliott's totally getting at. I agree wholeheartedly, but I think, and I've got some other questions, but this is about, um, air up application to move that land into treaty settlement and the loss of control in our bylaws.
Okay, so why don't we deal with the existing recommendation first?
Thank you, Chair. I would just suggest that perhaps it might not be in order, um, only because it presented as information within that for, and, um, and people might be there to discuss those things together. Um, so you might want to, uh, enter it out of order and change it.
Okay, in that case, I will rule it out of order and go back to, um, asking for recommendations on this item.
Yeah, I have more of a question than a comment. I admit I went through this report a lot quicker than I went through the other one because the other one ended up me going in all, a whole lot of trying to fill in the last ten years of work, um, which was really daunting. Um, so, but the, so the question really is, isn't this kind of contingent on the work of the previous report? Uh, that we spent all this time, uh, discussing, like, can this be done at the same time as the, uh, eight point two? Or is it really a separate consideration? It seems way too related. And also it seems to me that it probably is contingent upon colonization with the nation. Uh, it's a question in my mind and I really, um, am a little bit embarrassed to answering it or asking it because I, you know, I like to try to fill the answers in as much as I can before I ask questions. I don't feel I've done that.
That's okay, Corporate Officer.
Thank you so much. I think, while they have the potential, and Laura could correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, while they have the potential to be related, um, this is more of a land use regulation, um, issue where that is a project issue. And so that's why they might be separate.
Um, Ms. Roden?
The Chair, yeah, I agree with, with what Ms. Jones has said. Um, but I also would add that it's two separate processes. Um, and has applied to the province to have this fee simple parcel. Become to amen lands through a provincial, through a process under the final agreement. And the other report and all of the Lund Water District services is a completely separate, it's the conversion process. So it's different ministries. Um, I think they can be dealt with separately and should be so, dealt with separately.
Okay, so if I may? And they don't conflict with each other in any, uh, material way that would, like, I'm really, I feel really, um, sensitive to being in alignment with conversations that, uh, include the nation. Uh, I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from with this. And maybe I, maybe this is more just educating me by this question, but I'm certainly, certainly trust staff's, uh, judgment.
Okay, thank you, um, Director Elliott, Director Lennox.
Um, so I spent an awful lot of time working on treaties on behalf of the province. And, um, I don't actually see them as separate things because I thought what the letter's purpose was, was to flag an interest of the regional district so that the province could adequately represent us in, in the process that they do. Because we don't have our own jurisdiction. Therefore, we're asking them to speak on our behalf on this matter. Um, and, and I see the issue around the easements that exactly, whether that project goes forward or not, there is still an existing infrastructure that is there with easements in place that do not adequately represent the reality of them. And that is an interest that is there on the land for our constituents that the province ought to be aware of in their process of, of doing, uh, uh, of adding this to treaty lands. And so it's the province's responsibility to represent those interests. But I felt it was our responsibility to flag them and let them know that they were there. And so from my perspective, it's not out of order and it isn't a separate process. They may be separate things that we are doing about them. But the process of converting pro, the, these simple lands to treaty lands is a single process where the province approves. And they represent the interests of, of all the people in that process. We are the people. We flag the interests so that they're aware of it to see if there's anything that they need to put in the language of that transfer at all to protect those interests of the people. So from my perspective, this is a single letter identifying our interests within that land base. And if that's not what this is, then, then I don't know what we're doing.
Um, Director Lennox?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I guess first I'll start with a question. So, like, the first note that I wrote to myself, I must have been tired. Why do we need to tell the B C government our concerns? Just hang on, I'm speaking. So why do we need to tell them our concerns when there's already legislation mandates? All the ministries have these requirements to have full confirmation, et cetera. So my question is, is, um, well, I guess my, first my point is, is this doesn't seem like a complete motion, maybe to your point, Director Elliott. It's that there's more to it because this identifies the environment and our watershed. But really, um, there's other impacts on this application if it were to actually go through. And I believe it will. I mean, we have no power. We have no jurisdiction. And that, that's very frustrating when it's clearly spelled out municipalities do and we don't. So I have a problem with the whole application itself. Like, I actually appreciate the staff saying, yes, we should identify this, but why should we have to do that? And reconc, this, this opens up a whole host of questions for me around reconciliation, our lack of C three meetings. You know, like you said, everything's related to, to everything else. So we're gonna lose our bylaws and any ability we have to control that. What's, I just mentioned it already, what is the village center? And so the recommendation in my mind, the more I look at it, is not fulsome. Um, I think there, there are definitely positives for the nation. I'm in full support of, of their process. I've learned a lot about their, I didn't know they could actually just add to properties, uh, after a treaty's been settled. And so these are things that the public needs to understand as well. And the people I talk to don't understand. So I just, I think that, I appreciate the recommendation, but I'm, and I know I'm not, I'm not putting anything concrete forward, but it's more than that. There are other ramifications for our community in our communication to the ministry.
Okay, so maybe I'll ask a quick question. How time set did it insist?
Well.
Sorry, I can't answer that. Uh, I haven't seen any correspondence from the province on this.
You, Director Gisborne?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Glad I came in.
Yeah, good timing.
I was listening to the whole thing. Um, no, great. Uh, you know, this application kind of got me to learn quite a bit when I read through the report and went through, uh, the common final agreement. Chapter three lands set out the following clause in relation to general additions of lands. And at any time, the determination requests the agreements of Canada and British Columbia, they may add parcels of land to their treaty settlement lands. Uh, if they're within the Tlaman area, outside the boundaries of a municipality incorporated under the Local Government Act. And if the municipality consents. Now, that's different from what we get at the planning committee. The planning committee, we get provincial referrals, for example, a subdivision. We get a referral for subdivision where the planning committee says, hey, we either consent or we don't consent or, or sorry, no objection, sorry. We, we can give that input. However, it is still up to the Ministry of Transportation. So we might say, no, we don't like this subdivision application. And the Ministry of Transportation goes, that's nice. And they do it anyways. With this, as far as I understand, we're not even consulted. It's not, there's no obligation to even ask us to say, hey, how do we feel about this? How does this impact our, uh, local community services? How does this impact, you know, the Lund Improvement District or potentially a Lund Water System? How does this impact taxation? How does this impact us? So I'm looking at this going, okay, I wasn't around when that agreement was signed. But maybe the better way forward, because I'm looking at this problem not just for that parcel, but all parcels within the electoral areas. I think we should reach out to the Tlaman Nation, to the ministry and say, hey, can we get some kind of like consultation agreement? Where if there is an application like this, you ask us. And it, there, I don't think we need to have that strong language of saying, oh, no, you need to get our consent. Cause that's the municipality. Like, we need to pass a motion at council to say that council's okay with it. I'm not even asking for that. I'm just saying, hey, discuss. And maybe we can work something out or, or, or come to some kind of understanding. So that's the one way that we could go is by saying, hey, province, we actually don't have a meeting, say, let's put a pause on this. Ask, I, I think that might be the better way forward. The other way, and this is a little blunt, maybe a little extreme. But maybe the regional district, uh, entertains that idea of becoming a regional municipality that some community members have talked about. But if we become a regional municipality, then that clause that says, you know, they're required to get our consent will suddenly apply to the entire region. I, I think that's a little strong arm tactic, but I know some community members have talked about it. I think the easier way forward would be to say, let's get all the parties together and sit down and say, hey, can we get some agreement around consultation? So that we can get our impact. Cause, correct me if I'm wrong, this information was brought to us by our staff. This was not a referral from the province to us. Like, the province isn't asking us. They're just, oh, this came to our attention. And now it's a big issue with Lund Improvement District.
Well, maybe we can get clarification. I see Director Paul is next, but I just would like to ask, um, Ms. Roden, what is the trigger that precipitated the need for this letter?
Through the Chair, um, I was asked to do the report by the C A O, Radke. Um, we were both aware that Plamen had applied half the land added to Plamen lands. And under the final agreement, um, section eighty seven says when making a decision, I'm sorry, I didn't reference this in the report, but says when making a decision under paragraph eighty five, which is the paragraph Director Gisborne just read out. As Canada will require the parcel of lands to be in areas free from overlap with another First Nation unless that First Nation consents. And B, Canada and British Columbia may take into account other matters that Canada or British Columbia consider relevant. So our thought was if the board puts forward a letter, then it will get in the queue and be considered when we make a decision. Which is what I was talking.
Thank you. Director Paul, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And I appreciate that comment. I think there's actually two things we can do. And I think, given that there is no real process right now. So one is actually the process of consultation that Director Gisborne said. I think there is a case to be made to try to, you know, uh, inquire with the province and meet with them and ask what the, how that might change to improve communication with the R D. I do not think we should wait this, for this letter for that because that may or may not come to fruition. And that may or may not take years and years to resolve because that's a, asking the province to do something different in how they, uh, discuss and make changes with another government, right? The Plamen government. So the, uh, the letter, I mean, I appreciate the comments made by other directors about maybe not being fully, uh, as, as complete and maybe it's just a question, but I, I'll, I'll make a couple of suggestions and then pose it as a question for the Chair. So we, for example, we, uh, the, we could be providing in this letter, uh, the, either the full O C P or the portions of the O C P that we're talking about. So that letter could say, here's our concerns and here's the specifics that a basis for it. So those bylaws and O C P statements and, you know, that actually provides something. Because what we're actually trying to do here is interject our concerns into a process for which we have not been asked to have comments on. And we're saying there is a process, there's, something's happening. There's a negotiation and, uh, the province has a process that doesn't include the R D. And we're trying to get our concerns about the Lund Community Watershed into that. I, I think the motion itself catches both the, the elements of environmental protection. The elements of environmental protection that are the basis that are embedded in the O C P and the quantity and quality of water to Lund. But I also think, you know, as Director Elliott mentioned, the uh. Uh, you know, the infrastructure and the easements is part of it, but I I wouldn't want, I would want to be really cautious about. Doing too much there because we just passed, you know, a a recommendation. That we're expecting the province to resolve all those easements, so what I would actually prefer is that that, you know. Presuming that that will, you know, pass, um, you know, if and when that passed the board. That that would be part of the letter that we would say, here's our, you know, specifically, so in other words, it would be, you know, the letter could say, here's our concerns and. Attachments, and then the attachments could include both O C P bylaw related things that are listed in the staff report plus. The motion on item eight to say, you know, to, so the province has a heads up that we're concerned about easements and. If the, you know, if the transfer of ownership. It's not transfer of ownership, if the transfer of jurisdiction from. You know, fee simple land within the province of B C to treaty land in Tlatman Nation. Has any effect on our easement, our expectation that the province. Resolves easement issues for London Waterworks District doesn't change, we still expect them to do that before conversion, so they should take that into account if there's anything. That might affect their negotiations at this time, because maybe it does or maybe it doesn't. Um, so I so I guess the question then, I'll I'll flip that around to a question. Which is, do we need to add anything more to the motion to have a little bit of that? You know, to to ensure that that background information is included in the letter, or will that? Is under, is that understood in the context of the motion and that that information, there will be information along that lines included?
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, with regards to the uh O C P information that you referred to. Yes, I think that that uh. We can refer that question to.
Through the chair, uh, I I have a a letter partially drafted. For consideration in case this goes through today. And um, I was thinking I exactly what Director Fall said, attaching. The excerpts from the O C P and the zoning bylaw. So it's clear what what the all these regulations we have are around protecting the watershed.
And thank you, and I guess I I I was suggesting also this item eight that we. Passed the recommendation on, it's not passed at the board yet, obviously, but that's related to the. Our expectation that the province will uh resolve issues surrounding easements in right of way. But um. That'll take another week, another couple of weeks before it passes, thanks.
Thanks, Director Paul, so anyone who hasn't spoken on this yet?
I'm very concerned about something, I just.
Okay, go for it, Director Elliott.
Thank you, um, so. We're all here talking about these issues on the same day in the same place. The folks in the provincial government that are working on that treaty have nothing to do with the people who are working on the Lund Water Improvement District. So from their perspective, they don't know about each other. And there are two different arms of government doing two different things. So the idea that motions we made at the Lund Water Improvement District earlier today. Might impact what the government knows about this process. Is false, or I mean, it just, it won't happen, they don't, that's not how they work. Um, so. I'm not entirely comfortable with the motion as it is because we've ruled the one that is going to include. A bigger set of our interests out of order, and so my preference would be to 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 not pass this motion today, but rather. Um, send it back for um staff to come back with a maybe a more comprehensive. List of our interests within the area, and I think. The reason we tell them what our interests in the area are, not because we have jurisdiction or a proper process in place, but because the. The treaty says the province represents that and they're allowed to consider all of these things. And so we have input into what the province should be considering, and we need to write a letter that tells them what that is. It would be up to them to come back to us and get the details on that if they want them, we don't have to provide all the details. But a list of the fact that we have plans. And it's an area that's been under our jurisdiction and we have an O C P, the fact that um we have an interest as in the watershed as being the supply of water for the community. And the fact that there's a bunch of infrastructure that may or may not be adequately covered by easements are all things we should be flagging. To the provincial government so that while they're implementing these treaties, they can put wording that protects their ability to do stuff with that. And so. I think so, um. So my concern is is that we're not quite ready to know what should go in the letter just yet, and these are all things that. And maybe there's more staff can put on the list that I'm unaware of, because the. I just think the process of implementing treaties is not the same as everything else. And those, um, the treaty is set up that the province represents our interests, and it's important for us to clearly state what those are.
Okay, so are you seconding the referral motion?
Yes, I'm going to, but can I just speak to, I really want to support this concept, because it really made me think of something is that. Even though we don't have the, you know, veto power, whatever way you want to put it, it's still an example of how we should be involved. It's exactly what happened to First Nations not so long ago where they weren't consulted at all, because they didn't have to be. Well, if we're gonna improve any bloody way, we gotta do the opposite and say, just because you're not on the list, doesn't mean you can't speak up. So I think that's exactly where you're getting at, and the treaties do have provisions to consider those points, so. Good point. I think it requires a little bit more homework.
Alright, so there is a motion now on the table, if I'm understanding correctly, to refer this back to staff. For additional work on other things that might be included in the letter, is that?
With the idea being that we're writing a letter that that speaks, tells the province what our interests are in that area.
Our interest in our treaty. It's the lead water district.
Is one part of it.
Yes.
And that also makes sure that common is aware of what our interests are, even though we think they are, this is a formalized.
Sure, okay, so now there is a referral motion on the table, is that debatable? I can't remember.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Further discussion? Director Gisborne? And then Director Fall.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, uh, I'm fine with the referral motion, uh, hopefully it doesn't take too long and we potentially miss. Non-existent deadlines that the province has. Uh, I'm not going to speak too much more on this one, I have submitted a subsequent motion to our C A O, uh, our our officer, acting C A O. And then after we deal with this one, we can get it up there on the screen and then. Maybe finish before the board meeting starts.
No, because we have an in camera session. Okay, so. Further on the referral motion on the table, Director Fall, you're next.
I just briefly, I I, yeah, I think this this referral motion makes sense, we've heard from our manager of planning services that there's a draft letter that might, you know, given off, that'll. Roll into this, I don't think it'll cause a big delay. Um, hopefully, uh, of too long, these these, this, these negotiations take a while, so, you know, I think we'll take our time to do it properly and then it'll be able to really make sure. If we're going to try to articulate our interests in a way that. Uh, is is building relations with Tlatman and informing the province in terms of their role representing our, you know, our interests. Um, that that we're clear in what uh what is on, what's what's actually foremost in our minds in relation to that parcel, thank you.
Thanks, Director. Further discussion on the referral motion? Any no hands, all in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. So.
I'll move the subsequent motion that I've sent to the.
Sorry, just one second, what, are you moving the motion or is?
Yes, I'd like to move it, because I think it might be time sensitive with our board meeting that comes up next.
Oh, yes, I was just thinking, would you prefer to provide a notice of. For it to be included at the board?
That would be like five minutes, right? Either way.
But I was just thinking you might have to talk.
And so why don't we hold that for the board meeting?
Everyone's okay with it, but I usually we send it from committee to board, and if we talk about it now, that we don't need to talk about it at the board.
Well, we'll still talk about it anyway. But, okay, so are you making a recommendation then?
Um, yes, I'd be, I'd be happy to since we're on the topic.
Okay, so what?
So it's going up on the screen, uh, this, the committee recommend the board direct staff to request a joint meeting with the provincial ministry or ministries. And the telomination of the twenty twenty five U B C M convention to discuss the topic of collaborative consultation between the Q R D, telomination and the province regarding chapter three, section eighty five of the telomand final agreement. Speak very briefly. Um, I've put this forward because we also have another motion later on about. Having requests with ministers, uh, U B C M that's coming up later, uh, and my thought was, you know, let's, let's talk to the province because it's their. Duty to work with the telomination, and I said, you know what, let's also bring telomination in on this discussion because. Oh, what is it they say, not not about us without us? And I thought, let's all get all, everyone in the same room at U B C M, telomination is now a U B C M member, and then we can. Talk to the province and talk to them and say, hey, can we, we get something with the province that just says, hey, you, you sent us a referral, like all the other referrals that you send us, so that we can let you know if. This is going to be a big impact or a big, it's a community issue, and it's more of a broad. Uh, more of a broad motion to talk with the ministry and the telomand at the U B C M, so I hope the assembly supports it.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, just in support of the motion, sort of what I was getting at before. If the current uh legislation excludes regional districts, then we should speak up and change that.
Maybe not the legislation.
It will, whichever, it's still legis, it's still law.
Thank you, Chair. So while I think that 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 is um. Good thinking in in. In do something about the process. And I think what is you're looking for is just kind of a protocol arrangement. Not really a changing of the treaty. Uh, I think process wise, though, we might be wiser to ask common for a C two to just to table some ideas that we have. Prior to trying to elevate to that level, so I think we are trying to bypass that initial. Step that I think would be healthier for our relationship with common, and so I would. I would entertain that motion at a later date if we have had a C two that gives a heads up to common about the kinds of things we're hoping to do.
Thank you, Director Elliott. Director Gifford.
I would love to have discussed these items with the combination at a C two or a C three, I recall last year. We got a motion passed to the board to say, let's apply for a grant so we can have C twos and C threes. Here we are a year later, they haven't happened. We could be waiting another six years until we get a C two or a C three. The purpose of this motion is to actually talk to the ministry because the treaty. Between the telomination and the province and the feds is just that, it's between the telomination, the provincial and the federal government. We have no jurisdiction, we have no ability to say, oh, we want to, we think the treaty should be changed, we're not part of that. The issue is that the telomination have a treaty with the province. And the province, if they want to then put in part of their uh bandwagon or bailiwick or whatever to say, hey. If we get a referral, we will, we will ask the regional district and other folks as well. So really, I think asking the provinces is the right way to go, because it's a, it's an agreement, a treaty between the telomand and the provincial government, not us. And I'm not, and I'm not saying let's change the treaty or anything like that, it was a ton of work from all parties to get that treaty. Cross the finish line, and my thoughts are. You know, I'd love to have a C two or a C three, but uh, I'm I'm getting a lot of gray hair, waiting for that to happen. And we have grant money sitting in the bank, and it's not happening. So we have an issue right now, and I think that the proper way forward is to reach out to the province and reach out to the telomand and say, hey. Province. Because I know the telomand have a lot of paperwork that they got to deal with, and for us to say, oh, no, telomand, when you apply, you should send it to us, no, no, no. The province is the one that should send it to us, the province is the one that is responsible for all that paperwork. I don't, I don't intend to say, well, let's dump it on the telomand to send us more paperwork, no, 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 no. Make the province do their job. And the province to talk to us as well.
Thanks, Director Gisborne, Director Fall, and I remind everyone of the time.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I I mean, I, if I recall, I mean, I didn't, the. The motion itself requests to meet with the province and the telatman, I would actually, U B C M is an opportunity for us as children of the province to meet with the province, and I'd be comfortable passing this if it. Did not include the telatman in it, because then it would be asked meeting with the province, asking to meet with the province as we do, and to talk about. Uh, you know, the process, right, I mean, we we have very little influence over the process, but actually to try to um. You know, get some information from the province and actually put in a a, you know, a plug that we would like the province to. To communicate with affected regional districts, it's not about changing any any treaties or legislations, it's about asking the problems to do what they can do. And and then I I support what Director Elliott was saying, I think if we want to talk to the telatman about this. That we should actually schedule that for a C two, you know, and and notwithstanding what Director Gisborne said, we know, that doesn't mean we can't have one. Um, there's an item that would be useful to talk about, and I think it would be. We have a process to talk directly with them, I think trying to meet with the telatman at U B C M. Uh, elevates it in a way that I'm not comfortable with, so I'm gonna actually maybe make um a amending motion to take out the words and the telatman nation.
Second.
Thank you, that amendment has been moved and seconded, speaking to the amendment. Remove the name telomination from the motion. Are you speaking to the amendment?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. Uh, I'm fine if the motion is that the regional district wants to meet with the ministry, um, however, if the telomand are attending U B C M and they uh wish to come and attend. Uh, even though the motion doesn't say that they're. Part of the invitation, if they want to attend, I would be more than happy to have them come along with us.
So anything further on the amendment?
Officer, I think is.
I think just I would. I would appreciate know which ministry with staff would be scheduling. Meeting with.
I believe the ministry responsible.
Through the chair, Mer. Mer, Ministry of Indigenous relations and reconciliation.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so the um amendment before us. Still remove the name telomination, so further discussion, seeing no hands on the amendment only, all the clear. Any opposed? The amendment is carried back to the main motion, as you ended, Director.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So we would have been okay either way with this uh. Uh, motion. But what it, what's really important to me is that we communicate somehow, not necessarily as uh. Um, C to C or um, C three. But that are, that before we actually do that, if as. Mark said. Be not. Not talking about them except with them, how does that uh?
About us.
Not about, yeah, not about us without us, that's really important to me, uh. The relationships we have here in our region are paramount to me personally. That is why I expressed a reservation with uh or question with regard to eight one. And I'm really grateful that that was uh clarified and, you know, we came to um good resolution there, but uh. This one, I really want us to, um, I support it, but I want us to communicate. With uh the nation. Prior to us doing anything in September. That's that's important to me, so and I I would make a motion to that effect. If that's necessary, uh, which. Perhaps might be either a letter or um. A meeting. Not exactly sure what would uh. What I'm looking for, except that we connect somehow before we go ahead and do. So Director Gisborne's um. Recommendation is.
Yeah, let's ask our corporate officer for, I don't think she has something.
I have two things to say, first, I need to have confirmation that I'm striking out the correct telominations from. From the motion. Uh, second, uh, with regards to. Communicating, um, that I think it would be a good idea to have a motion on that. However, I think that could be done today by by a notice of motion to be considered at a future meeting, because that would not be time sensitive.
Oh, thank you.
I think the clarification Director Fall has an answer for that.
And we will call on him next, Director Fall.
Uh, well, first, I mean, I I support the idea of doing a notice of motion, I I think the uh, the idea that um. You know, not not speaking about the telomand without the telomand, but I I think it's different from requesting a meeting versus extending an invitation. And I think it's more than just an invitation, it's also offering to meet with a C two, extending an invitation, explaining a bit. Um, and in terms of the the struck out mo- uh, words, I think that makes sense, I think really, the the, this is. To try to limit that, we don't want this to go uh be perceived badly. Uh, in uh uh by the telatman, this is really us wanting to talk with the province about. Things the province might communicate with us about uh about changes related to treaties, so we're not trying to inject ourselves into the treaty. Negotiation process or revision process, we're trying to say, hey, province, we need to talk and understand. The process a bit more and understand how we can learn a bit more and have a bit more uh feedback and consultation, it's not a ma, you know. So I think that the the, that's the long answer to say, I I think that's the right uh struck out words.
Thank you, so you're speaking in favor of the motion, Director Elliott.
Thank you. Um, so I didn't vote on the changes, because it it doesn't matter to me, I just, I'm not in favor. Asking for this particular meeting at U B C M this year. And and I'll tell you why, I think the treaty is the treaty and there is provisions for us to provide our our interests, just as I said, via a letter when things come up. Um, what we really are needing is. Um what we really are needing is to ask Amen for a C two meeting. And because we do have these issues popping up that that we would like to discuss. And I think what we're looking for is an avenue to ask for some type of protocol for the implementation of the treaty on in in that session. And I think we should be asking Khaman and that's how we be collaborative. If down the road, we've been trying very hard to get a collaborative solution with Khaman and we're finding that we can't get there. We would then go to the province with a meeting and say, hey, we we need you to protect us because we're not getting the response that we're hoping for directly. And and from my perspective, that is the right way to handle this situation, is to have faith that we and Amen are on the same page and care about the same thing. Without going to what feels like almost Ottawa in this case. To to have someone else explain to us how to solve our local problem. The treaty is what it is and it's not changing. And so we have some interests and we should talk to Khaman about them. And the proper motion I think we should be considering is directing um the board to um extend an invitation to Khaman for a C two meeting with this being one of the agenda items.
So you're speaking against the motion.
I am speaking against the motion. I feel like it's completely the wrong direction.
Okay, thank you. Um corporate officer, would you mind reading the motion on the table? Where is it going?
That the committee recommend the board direct staff to request a joint meeting between the province or between the provincial ministry. So we're going to get rid of joint. Um at the twenty twenty five U B C M. At the top, that will collaborate on the treaty and the province regarding chapter three, that's the final.
So that is a motion to request a meeting with the province at U B C M. Yes, okay. That is the motion that is on the table at the moment. Is there further discussion on the motion on the table? Not seeing any hands. Yeah, I will call for the vote. All in favor of that motion? Eight, one, two, three, four, hands. Any opposed? Two, three. The motion is carried. Now, did you want to propose a subsequent motion? Um Director Elliott, that we uh invite the Taliban to a C two?
Uh yeah, I would um direct, how do we get it to the board meeting? I would uh uh the committee um recommends to the board that the board invite combination to a C two meeting. Um of which we would build an agenda, including the lo- the, you know, the land water systems, um implementation of the treaty.
I was just gonna say typically we do the invitation and then request agenda. Perfect, I love that.
I'll second. The motion that on the table that we invite to Lom for the C two um. Yeah, coming up. Alright, so is there further, do you understand what a C two is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So uh is there a discussion on this motion?
Well, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, so you know, hands, all in favor of the recommendation. Any opposed? Carry to down. Corporate officer.
Yes, perhaps we could adjourn and fix a time to adjourn after the regional board meeting. Um uh or we could go through.
I think we would should go through it because I think it's gonna be very quick.
Hey, and we do not have any guests attending the regional board meeting, so there's no delegations that are waiting for us. So there is no risk.
Okay, alright.
You have to do the reading.
Except for, sorry, Director David is here.
Do that.
Okay, well, I think actually, the next item on our agenda is new business. Question period.
Okay, and thank you, uh the next item on our business is what?
Question, new business and then question period. There's no new business. We are at question period. The center of the question board. Hardworking committee today.
Hello Chair, it's Golinski from the Peak calling. Uh good day. Um I found item eight point two, the motion somewhat confusing, and I am hoping that the corporate officer can send that to me at her convenience.
Raise your hand.
Uh thank you for the chair. Uh the minute, the minute shall likely be published before the end of the week. Uh and they'll be there and we will send you a link.
I appreciate that. Thanks for the response. That was my question, Chair.
Okay, thanks very much Paul. Uh corporate officer.
Thank you. Just under uh in camera closed closed session, I would like uh the committee to add J information that is prohibited or information that if the document would be prohibited under section twenty one of the Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Can you forward me that?
Me? Well, uh I will put it on the screen.
Okay, so I'll move the motion. I move that the committee move in camera the meeting be closed to the public on the grounds of the subject matter to be considered relates to matters covered by the community charter under section ninety one A, personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered or positioned as an officer, employee, or agent of the regional district or another position appointed by the regional district, in negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a regional district service. And at their preliminary stages and that the view of the committee could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the regional district if they were held in public and J information that is prohibited or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section twenty one of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And and the consideration of whether the committee meeting could be closed under provision of this subsection or subsection two.
Thank you. Seconded by Director Lennox. Um all in favor? Any opposed? Terry.
Hi George.
Are you leaving in Georgia, Kevin? Great.
You miss me George? That's why you come back?
Good with you.
The recorders have caught this one.
Oh, I love it.
Mind your thirty minutes.